hereby bring the meeting of the Wydricka City Council to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, please be seated. Anyone who has a cellphone, please turn it off or at least on silent. Also, I have to announce, I need to announce that there is no closed session this evening, it's been pulled from the agenda. So, public comments, this is the time for public comments. Council may ask questions but may take no action during the public comment period section of the meeting, except to direct staff to prepare a report or place an item on a future agenda. If you are here to make a comment on a specific agenda item, you may speak at that time. If not, this is the time. Please limit your remarks to five minutes and speak from the podium. State your name and mailing address so that city staff can respond to you in regards to your comments or provide you with information if appropriate. You are not required to state your name or your address if you do not desire to do so. Is there any public comment? Yes, Dawn Marie. Good evening.
Good evening, Dawn Marie Autry, I live on Fourth Street here in Wydricka. So, I would like to have you look into how much it's costing us to have the police clean up, as well as everyone else, clean up all the garbage for all these homeless people. Because what I'm thinking is, I've talked to about fifteen homeless people who have said that if there was a place they could throw away their garbage when they're ready to move on, they would. But everywhere that they want to, they're beaten up and told not to hand. So, I don't know if it's a true thing or not. But, and also another thing is, having them go to the bathroom in buckets is just absolutely disgusting. Not only that, it's a CDC issue. So, if, 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 I, I don't know how much it would cost, if it would be a cost-effective thing to allow bathrooms here and there, you know? I mean, it's just a thought.
It's nothing we can really speak to or talk to at this time, but we can refer to staff.
Right.
That would be public work, so.
Yeah, because I know that we're getting money, or we're supposed to be getting money for homeless. Wouldn't that be kind of towards that?
We can, we can look into it. It's not very much, you'd be surprised. But, I'm not sure of the exact figure. I'm gonna speak about a homelessness meeting I went to today later.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay, any other comments from the public? Come on down. Hello?
Hi, I'm Kim Abbott. My address is 1001 Jackson Street in Wydricka. And I'm here to ask what your position would be on possibly leasing out the community theater to a nonprofit organization? With the thought that a nonprofit organization might be able to get grants to actually have enough money to operate the theater rather than having it just sit there most of the time.
Well, that's also something we'd have to refer to staff, since it's not on the agenda, we don't have any background information. But that's something we can look into.
Okay, and then while I'm here, I'd also like to request the financials for the theater. I understand that's supposed to be public record, so.
That would be Retta, our treasurer.
It's on our website, but I can help you carve that down or give you something just of that.
You can come into the office and talk to Retta.
That, that would be great.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Kim. Any other public comment?
Hi, I'm Jan Osborne, I live at 1027 North Street in Wydricka. And I was gonna wait till later in the agenda, but I thought maybe that I should bring it up now and then bring it up later too. Rules enforcement at Green Horn Park. Since I returned from the winter, I have been at Green Horn Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, and it's only been a two weeks. The last time I went was Wednesday. But every time I have been there, I have witnessed what are code violations. Dog feces on the ground. Last Thursday, I saw a man send his dog, which was off-leash, into the reservoir where it proceeded to chase ducks and geese. I called YPD and had a discussion later with the animal control officer. I've talked with Carl Greiner and Sandy, who worked there. And they, I'm very happy to see that there is a camp host there. But I think there may be a little confusion between everybody, at least I'm confused, about rules enforcement. One of the duties in the application for the camp host is rules enforcement. And I don't understand what that means. Does the camp host have the authority to cite people for code violations?
No, he has the ability to call the police. He has the ability to call the police department.
Okay, so he really doesn't have any enforcement?
He can ask people to follow the rules, and if they don't, then he would call the police.
Okay. And then, when I've talked to the animal control officer who responded to my phone call to, and maybe somebody else called too, but I assumed it was my call to YPD about the man putting his dog in the reservoir to chase the ducks and geese, I was told by him that the park was for everybody, which I think it should be. But I think that pet owners have a special responsibility by virtue of having a pet. And I was told that the pets can play frisbee or run in the lawn area or the picnic area. The code clearly states that those are areas where the dogs must be on a leash. I didn't witness that happening. But I'm, I'm thinking that perhaps a review of the codes. And I was also told, not by him, but Carl said he had been told, that there was no leash law. And I said, "Well then, why are there those signs that say all pets must be on a leash?" That's what he had been told. So I think there's some confusion. And for me, as a user of that park, I, I'm not prepared to go back unless there's somebody with me because I don't feel safe. There are dogs that are off-leash. I, I talked to a gentleman one day when I was there and said, "Please, call your dog and get control of him." He was in one of the fishing areas there on the south side. He picked up the dog, and I went on, and I mentioned it to Carl later on the north side as I walked around. The same man was there leaving, and the dog was still off the leash. So, I would appreciate it as a user of the park, that it be welcoming to me as well as to pet owners. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jan. And I think that, does that fall under public works too, or is that?
There's, that's obviously because of the enforcement, there's public works and.
And the police department.
And the police department.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to see us review the codes on the park. I think it's a good idea now that we've got a park host there. That the park host is made aware exactly what he's supposed to do, and then when he's supposed to call the police department if he needs help for enforcement. So I mean, that's something we need to address and make sure it's correct.
I can bring that to you at the next meeting if you'd like.
Next meeting on the ground.
We have the parks, codes and rules. Also, what we, we're, a working document is the draft, in draft form, it's the Park Host Manual. So, we're working with Carl and Sandy on that, inserting the ones that we want. So, it's a living document at this point because it's a second set of hosts.
I've heard lots of compliments, many compliments, from people that use the park regularly about how much better it looks and, and that there's more of a presence.
We'll get there.
Yeah, for sure. Well, I think I also need.
I'm amazed at the people in Wydricka that use it. And I take my shepherd out, who weighs a hundred pounds, and he's always on a leash. And people, I, I mean, I, I, like Jan, I've seen people, they just let their dogs run, and I just stop. And I say, "You're gonna need to curb your dog, because my dog's a little bigger than your dog. There could be an issue with your dog."
But, it was my.
But, so I, I, so I can see what she's saying, and yeah, it doesn't hurt to go back over and make sure we're all on the same page.
Right, and it was my understanding.
And the pooling too.
It was my understanding that if there's, that the leash area is around the lake and in the grassy area, but up above on the trails, people can take the dogs.
I don't know, because I think that if I let my dog off, those geese would not be safe. I mean, honestly.
Because I'm happy to go.
And my dog will behave, but I think it would naturally, so I don't ever let it off in the, in the grassy area.
Well, I think another thing too, we need to look at is the signage that's around the park because I know that's probably, that's probably not adequate at this point in time too for, to making the public aware of what's going, needs to be done and.
The park rules have, they do need updated. We have been working on it for a number of years. The police chief and our maintenance operations, Ben Miller, have been meeting pretty regularly for about the last eight or twelve months on that. It is a, it's kind of a heavy lift, getting into ordinance. We wanna make sure we do it right. So, but we can stat issue on where we are in that.
That would be great. And we, we normally have someone from the police department here, but I don't see an officer here or the chief. So, could we request him to come to the next meeting and this will be part of it?
Yeah, we can, we can, we can do that.
Or just have Steve meet with him.
Well, yeah, you're welcome to meet with him. I just think it's a good idea to have them here if we have questions about policing authority.
Yeah. The, I, I think the staff member that was, would be, have been able to come tonight is out of call, so.
Lieutenant Betts?
Yeah. No, neither of these are here either, so.
Okay, we'll work on that, Jan, thank you for bringing that to our attention. Okay, any other, any other public comments? Okay, then we will go forward. Item number one, discussion possible action consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion unless any member of the council wishes to remove an item for discussion or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval and ratification of payments issued from April 5th through April 18th, 2019. And B, approval of minutes of the meeting held April 4th, 2019. What are the wishes of the council?
Still moved.
Okay, I have a motion.
Second.
And a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Okay, hold on, wait. Alright, item number two. Discussion possible action, approval of appointment of Kalen Sandberg to the Wydricka Volunteer Fire Department. Are you here? Come on down. And we have a representative from the fire department too. Great, come on down. Where's the chief?
Uh, I'm not sure. Chief is, Assistant Chief Suter got tied up at work. I was on my way back from Sacramento with training. And he called me, he goes, "What are you doing?" I said, "I'm on my way home with training." And he says, "Where are you at?"
Guess what?
I told him, "I was down Lake Hedy," he goes, "You might just be able to make it for me."
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
I saw you come in, thank you for coming.
I said, "It was business casual training," I said, "I might make you for him or anything." He goes, "As long as you got a colored shirt on, you should be alright." But as the first lieutenant for the Wydricka Volunteer Fire Department, I'd like to introduce Kalen Sandberg, who has been through the application process with the fire department. Has been voted on by the members and been approved by the department.
Wonderful.
So, here's Kalen Sandberg. He's been, even at not being a member yet, he's been at numerous of, numerous functions that we've helped since he's been going through the application process. He's had his, he's been around asking questions and wanting to learn as much as he can before he can get his hands dirty. So.
Well, that's great, well, welcome, Kalen.
Thank you.
Anyone have any questions of Kalen, or do you have something you'd like to say?
I just wanna thank you all for everything that you guys do. It's been a long process trying to get on with the department, but it's also been a lot of good experience and training, so.
Great, yeah, it looks like they put you through the ring, made you jump through the hoops, so.
We, we thank you for.
Yeah, it's your stepping up.
Yes, thank you very much.
As a department, we thank you for sticking through it.
Exactly.
That's awesome. Okay, I would like a motion.
I'll make the motion to, for the approval of appointment of Kalen Sandberg to the Wydricka Volunteer Fire Department.
Second.
And I have a second. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same side? Okay, motion carries. Welcome to the police, not the police, the fire department.
One more thing to do.
Now you get sworn in or out or something.
Just stand right there and smile up at the camera. You, well, I, look how I cheat, it's really big. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Kalen Sandberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Welcome aboard, good to have you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you for volunteering.
Welcome aboard, pleasure.
Awesome. So, how many members do we have now of the, of the fire department? Sworn in. Twenty-seven, maybe? Jerry was telling us.
Twenty-five, I think.
Twenty-five?
I remember there was somewhere.
And he's number twenty-five or number twenty-six? Okay, great, wonderful. I'm really glad to see your numbers growing. That's great. Well, welcome and thank you very much.
And can I give a shout out to his lovely wife, Melissa?
His lovely wife is here, Melissa, hi.
You'll probably all know her.
Thank you for lending him to us. Probably more often than you'll want to. Okay, oh yeah, I shouldn't, shouldn't want to. Okay, item number three on the agenda, discussion possible action. A, approve Minor Street facade grant program applications. Larry and Carrie Lynn Blazer are two in the audience with us today. In an amount up to $3,318 for 331 West Minor Street, and amount up to $6,562 for 333 West Minor Street. So, we'll look at that one first.
Yes, mayor, members of the council, so you have the applications in front of you for the two buildings there at basically the corner of Oregon and, and West Minor. So, there has been some work that was done on this fairly modest amount back in November of 2012, or seven years ago or so, almost seven years ago. And, and then we also have had in the meantime some grants for signs, but we do that when businesses change over, so that's, that's normal. So, the facade program, which hasn't, we haven't had too many come before you lately, but it's funded by the Stewart Trust. And among other things, the Stewart Trust is designed for improving the, the look of Minor Street. That was how we got the money through the trust as well. Grants can be fifty percent of eligible costs up to $10,000. And the eligible costs include various facade services, as well as engineering for the signs, signs, and that sort of thing. According to our grant guidelines, corner buildings and projects that are deemed exceptional can negotiate for larger grants and grant amounts. The building, 330, I can't remember.
333, isn't it?
Thirty-three, thirty.
Has, has two sides, right?
Thanks, it's on two sides.
Actually, three sides with the back.
So, we've been working with the, with the applicants to kind of, there's a, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to the, the building to keep it in, in great shape. Some of it was on the back side of the building, gutters, and something about leveling the ground. Those are not actually in this.
Mortar, is that like the missing bricks and things like that?
Um, that's, we can probably let that, because the applicants are here, so they'll, they can talk to that. So that's the, in a nutshell, that's the first part of it. We did, on, on the brickwork, you know, the brickwork on the corner building there goes from the front all the way around the side and then into the back. And so this proposal is for doing all of that. The vast majority of brick, of course, is on those two sides. One that's visible from Minor, you know, looking across Oregon Street, and one that's actually on Minor Street. The other, the back of the building isn't visible from Minor Street. It is visible, obviously, from, from Oregon Street. You know, if you're gonna get a contractor out there, I kinda said, "Well, you know, alright, maybe all the brickwork could be qualified on, on one, but not the downspouts and stuff that are clearly just on the back of the building." So, in addition to the grant application tonight, the applicants have inquired about the Coca-Cola sign, if that can be touched up. Frankly, at some point in the past, we've, we've heard that Coca-Cola may help fund those, but I don't know if that's true or not, or just sort of internet rumor. I've, I've not ever confirmed that. But anyway, that would be a future application, not one now. And so, but we thought we'd bring both of them to you tonight, or both of those on that building, as well as the other building tonight to, to talk about. So, anyway, the applicants are here, we'd be happy to answer any questions. And I'm sure that they would like to talk about the building a bit.
Sure, Larry and Carrie, come on down.
So, your question about the mortar.
Yes.
Basically, with any building on Minor Street, if you look at the historical society standards, it says that the mortar is supposed to be replaced as per the National Register guidelines. And those guidelines clearly state you have to use a historic mortar that we used in the 1860s when that building was built.
So that's the limestone?
Yeah, to keep it together. Unfortunately, on our building, that wasn't enforced in the past, and they used modern Portland cement. So what happens is that's much harder than the old bricks. So when the bricks take in water, they swell, but the Portland cement stays and it won't escape the water, so the bricks actually explode. So you can see there's lots of bricks that need to be replaced.
Yeah, that, that's what you see, it's called spalling. And that's because the mortar that they replaced is so much harder than the brick. The old mortar was softer than the brick, so that when there was too much pressure from excessive swelling from taking in moisture in the brick, it's the mortar that would give way and the bricks would remain intact. So because they did those repairs in the past, when we have our, when we have the mason come in to do the work, not only does he have to dig out the broken brick and replace them, he has sourced out historically appropriate bricks to replace. He salvaged brick from a historic building in Etna. So, it will be, the bricks will be replaced with appropriate bricks. But also, he will have to come along with a saw and cut out the mortar that they already did because we need to get that out to stop it from breaking more bricks. So in addition to replacing missing mortar, we have to remove the wrong mortar and also replace that as well in order to preserve the building.
And then the parapet on the wall.
Question, is that process all in your quotes, sir?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
I think it is.
Yes, sir. We, my husband reached out to a gentleman who was involved in the Jacksonville Building Restorations, who was much more educated in the mortar. Most masons are actually not familiar with this level of mortar. It has to be appropriately sourced. It's not something that you can just generically go out and buy. So he was able to educate our local mason as to what is the, what is the correct mortar and how he can source it and how he can mix it, so that it's done properly.
Interesting, from Jacksonville.
The older gentleman, yeah. He's a retired mason.
He's retired.
That's interesting.
But he was very generous in providing us with the, with the information that we needed and also that the local mason needed. And the other pictures where you see the discoloration, that is, that's where there's missing mortar, but then also you'll see where there are two uncapped chimneys. And that is our request for what's called a parapet wrap. So they will actually wrap across the top and down the backside of the parapet wall. And it, in the process, it will stop the constant penetration of the water and it will also serve as a cap to those chimneys to stop that discoloration that's happening because those chimneys were lowered and never capped.
And the reason that needs to be wrapped instead of just capped on the top is because that particular parapet, instead of being straight like most parapets are when they built it in the 1850s, they, they stepped it. So it's got three different steps going down to the water, instead of just falling off and hitting the roof. Actually sits on it, sits on the, on the brick. So instead of just capping it very tough, we have to cap all three layers on that parapet wall to keep it from re-staining the Coca-Cola mural and all that stuff.
Interesting. Okay, yeah, I'm, I'm looking at these pictures and I go by there like almost every day and I've never noticed the different shades.
Yeah, and I cleaned up the sidewalk now, got rid of all the plants that were growing.
That's a good thing, thank you. Our code enforcement officer, thank you.
And we got the electrical already upgraded in, in the building, so.
Oh, great.
Yeah, you got that.
Wonderful.
Yeah, there's a lot of other work that's not part of the grant, or what we've included in the grant application process is probably less than half of.
Less than half.
Yeah, a lot less than half of.
Right, and, and the reimbursement is half of.
Yeah, no, yes, you're talking about the.
No, I mean, I mean even, our, our other upgrades are more than double of what we've even included in this with the electrical and, and post and roof and skylight.
All the historical buildings.
Quote, is that who you're gonna use, or Jane Palameo, the one they're gonna use?
Yes.
Is that gonna use?
Yeah, Sam, yeah, Sam. I showed him all the stuff from the National, from the government website, and he, we read through it.
For the National Historic District requirements.
Exactly, and we got the formulas for the mortar that they have to mix on site because they can't just buy the bags, so they have to bring in the line, they have to bring in the sand.
Oh, okay, mix it on site?
Yeah, so it's a, it's a lot more process. When I first brought Sam out there and I didn't know about this, he said, "Oh yeah, it was gonna be one price," but then we started doing research on how it properly has to be done to restore the building and keep it the way it's supposed to look. It's a lot more labor.
It's a lot more labor intensive.
Right. Okay, any other questions from the council?
I have one.
Yep.
This is just for the front of the building and the side on Oregon Avenue, correct? Nothing on the back?
No, the work is gonna continue.
The brick will go around the back.
Yeah, the, the work is gonna continue around the backside. The backside, as I'm sure everybody knows, when people come around the side and they do, you know, photos on the, with the Coca-Cola mural and all of the locals that come around, the one thing that's unique about these buildings is that the backside is extremely high-profile. So, really.
Yeah, it's exposed from, I mean, everybody sees.
Everybody sees it.
The backside of that building, it's right, it's right there, I mean.
You know, it's.
By the insurance company, yes.
You know, the rest of the buildings that are down alleyways and everything else, you don't see the backs of the buildings. This one particular building.
On the corner.
Being on the corner is really kind of three-sided. Everybody sees, and I think that it, it impacts just the overall look for all of the locals too, that are constantly seeing it, that, for them to be able to see that it's being done and it's all being cleaned up. Hopefully, we'll eventually be able to get some historic signage painted on the back too.
Well, that would be great.
Yeah, our, our goal is to just continue to do the upgrades. This is just kind of our first phase. The other pictures that you see there, where they had mentioned another future grant, is where we would like to paint the architectural details on the front side of the building. Unfortunately, our finances only go in, in stages.
That's understandable.
But that shows where we're taking the building to in the next phase. Hopefully, in the fall, we'll be able to move towards painting the architectural details. Right now, the front is just plain color, except for the blue, which we intend to be rid of.
And you have the, the sample of the pink.
Yes, yes.
And that's a historically accepted color, right? You have to do that for.
We did that, do that, yes.
Yeah, we had that approval. We tried to keep something that would be close to the color of the real brick.
That looks good.
And accent all of the architecture that you just don't see right now.
It's a lot of work.
It is, but it'll be good. We're excited to, to be part of it and to be part of, you know, of city events and kind of help bring back Minor Street.
So you're gonna get rid of the.
That's what it is now. Yes, so unfortunately, my pictures aren't of great quality, but in the other picture, the fronts will be kind of an off-white. The underside of the 333 window would be in the red to tie in with the brick and then probably a dark gray black tunnel to highlight the arches that are actually there. That's the goal in our next phase that we're hoping to get to in the fall.
Yeah, that'll be great. Any other question?
I have one.
Oh, yeah.
I just, I did. I just, I didn't wanna trump you, did you have a question? I, I just wanna make sure that we're following the guidelines of the grant. Can we do the back of the building?
The, the grant, it says that for a corner building, or a building that you could deem as exceptional, relation, in relationship to the historic district, you can go above the ten thousand, they're not limited.
But, my main question was, we can do the back of it.
Yes, it's your discretion.
Okay. Especially since it's so visible.
And I would say, in turn to the stewardess, I would say that it's, it's de minimis, the, the back part, compared to the longer part of the other part, too, so that's part of why we're recommending that.
The viewer, gotcha.
Okay. Um, any further questions, or do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the Minor Street, uh, facade grant program application for three thousand three hundred thirteen dollars. At, at three thousand three hundred eighteen dollars for three thirty-one West Minor Street, and up to six thousand five hundred and sixty-two dollars for three 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 West Minor Street.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. Congratulations, and, and welcome, we're really glad that you're doing that, it's going to be nice for downtown.
We're really looking forward to it.
Thank you, Brad.
Oh, I'm sorry, and there's another part, that's the Coca-Cola part? Okay, three B, consider accepting a future grant application for three thirty-three West Minor Street on the corner to refurbish the Coca-Cola mural, and add exterior painting to the front facade that you were just talking about, in order to highlight historic brick archways.
Question?
Yes.
Do we have to revoke for them to, to consider them bringing back another?
Well, not really, it's more for discussion, they wanted to know.
Great.
New York sure, since the, the building in order to receive more grant funds, this is adding even more.
My husband is looking into, um, as Mr. Baker mentioned, um, possibly even being able to, uh, receive some funding from Coca-Cola.
I did find a company back east, fifteen of them so far.
For historic.
Yeah, they, they, they supply the artists from Coca-Cola and.
Nice.
Oh, that would be wonderful.
They've done them all back east, but hopefully they get them out here.
If we're able to get them to be the ones to do that, that'd be great. Save us even more money.
Great, well, good luck with that, and I don't know, do we have to vote on that, or just say, come back?
As long as we kinda have a general consensus, we're gonna.
Good idea.
Because what, what, what we were looking at is that we wanted to go ahead and let them get started on this now, and then have another phase, that's unusual, that's not how we usually do it. But we thought it made sense, in this particular case, to consider doing that, so. If there's kind of a, uh, do we need a form of vote?
Is it a consensus?
Consensus would.
General consensus is good, I'm seeing nodding heads, so.
Thank you very much.
Alright, great, good luck, that's awesome. Okay, so we're now on to item number four, um, which is, presentation code enforcement update, Willow Martindale. Willow, let us know what's going on.
Hi, Willow, I actually.
We're coming into your season.
Yes, yes, I actually have a, um, carousel again for you.
Reta, you're the expert.
I can do it without it, it's not a problem, but I don't know what's going on.
It's finicky, only Reta has the magic touch. Well, Reta and Gabe.
Yeah, I was thinking, I was thinking that, you know. It's, uh.
Just needed Reta to look over her shoulder.
Oh, is it on now? Oh, good.
She's still got the magic.
Turning it on, turning it on, hell.
Okay, so, um, basically, right now, I'm kinda gonna do another update from the last time that I spoke with you guys, which was, um, roughly last fall, end of ish weed abatement timeframe, so it's before I had my last set of hearings regarding weed abatement, and then coming into the winter fall season, and here we are back towards the beginning of weed abatement.
And everything's growing.
Yeah, it is. So, um, there was two additional hearing events that I had with our hearing officer, Dave Mason, from the timeframe of when I last spoke with you until right now. And, um, each obviously was handled on an individual basis, because each case in this matter is going to be different. Each case has its own problems, each case has its own, um, willingness to cooperate or lack thereof. And, uh, so the, the cases are listed below, it was eleven oh six, uh, Oregon Street, which was a vacant lot, five hundred West Lennox Street.
Can you read that?
Fifteen fifteen Sam Piper, and three eighteen Herzog. And so, um.
One, two, three, four.
An overview of.
Pictures are better, yeah.
And, yes, the picture's worth a thousand words, right? So, eleven oh six, it was a vacant lot, and the gentleman felt that he could just store all of his limbs, his trailer full of the limbs, and then let the weeds grow up around it. And this was high time of weed abatement, so there was well over foot tall dead grass. Um, and he was actually wound up required, so this was all before, and then after the fact, he wound up, um, removing the trailer, removing all the branches, there was even unfortunate people who were dropping trash bags over his fence, so then he removed all the trash as well. Um, he stated that majority of his reasoning was because, um, the smoke, which our hearing officer thought was kind of ironic at the same token, because the reason for the smoke was because of all the fires that were happening, and the reason for the weed abatement is to avoid having fires. So, Mr. Mason decided that it was right to reduce the amount of fines, but actually have him understand that it would've cost him way less to have somebody or himself go out and weed abate and remove that, than to get the fines that he wound up having. And, um, then he was required to not have any kind of violation at all for an entire calendar year from the, that date mark, which, as of right now, he has complied to. Then next is, uh, five hundred West Lennox, and the big thing, obviously, as you can see in this, in these two photos, is the large amount of dry wood that is stacked.
Oh, against.
It'll come back.
Up against the, up against the garage. And so, if that were to somehow combust, or somebody, the, I believe, three of the adults in the home smoke, um, that, if that would have combusted, the garage would've gone, the house would've gone. Right next to it is the, the Discovery High School section. So, a lot of, a lot of stuff could've happened. And, um, so eventually, after him coming to the hearing, um, he was able to make a fairly decent case for our hearing officer, and he did have a fine set, but it wasn't nearly the amount that he was, um, actually cited for. However, again, he was required to not have any violations within the following year, and, um, he's actually been very good at now contacting me, 'cause he thought if he could avoid contact, that he could avoid problems.
Doesn't work that way.
No, it doesn't. And, um, he had an issue with actually a dead cedar tree just recently on his property, and within a week, he had, had contacted me and had it down. So, he's very much aware now, and, um, understanding that it's not that you just can't dig your head in and stand and avoid it. Then next is a burnt building that was out on fifteen fifteen Sam Piper, which had been there for, I wanna think, almost ten years, I'd been just shy of. And I know that the city had written multiple letters trying to get it to come down, and to no avail. This poor woman.
If you talk to the fire department, they'll take care of that.
I was actually successful, she has taken it down, it's completely down, completely abated. So, this was the before, so it's actually completely empty now, she, she completely complied. The hearing officer actually wound up, uh, requiring her to pay the full amount of fines cited, which was over three thousand dollars, because she refused to acknowledge the fact that she was getting in trouble for this. And it had been going on for such a long period of time, and it takes quite a while for three thousand dollars to accumulate at a hundred dollars a day. So, I had been battling with this woman for quite some time, trying to get her to understand that this needed to come down, this needed to occur, this had been going on for almost a decade. And, um, so we got it to happen, and now she is, um, making monthly payments to pay off of her fine, and she has apologized, and she has assured me that, you know, anything that's going on on the property to let her know, because she wants to be in compliance with the city.
Is she absentee?
She lives in Grants Pass, she does have family members who live within the city limits, but she herself lives in Grants Pass. The next.
Ooh.
Problem I have is three eighteen Herzog. So, this property, unfortunately, um, has multiple issues, not along with just the junk that we have accumulated. This was after a ten-yard dumpster was out front of the home for almost a month. And this is what remained. So, I actually did a full walk crew with the granddaughter of this property, and, um, not much occurred. So, I actually spoke, we went to hearing for this, she also has accumulated fines, and, um, it's still unfortunately out of compliance. This one, however, I have been receiving multiple information from other agencies that is directly affected by this property, um, being part out of behavior health, being part with the probation, being part with the sheriff's office, and even the police department. So, there's a handful of issues going on here with this particular parcel, however, there's been, I drove by today, and I'm seeing the pickup truck is completely empty, so there's no stuff in the back of the pickup truck. She has removed a handful of the appliances, so there's not as many appliances in the backyard. So, it's been this slow, slow, slow-going process, and, um, I, being that I'm slow, that I make regular trips by, I make contact with the granddaughter, she knows I'm still trying to get this thing compliant. This one is going to, I have a feeling, wind up in the court system, because I have to get an inspection warrant behind it, along with cooperating agencies as well. So, this one is a little bit, this is, I think, probably my toughest one so far, just because there's been lack of compliance, along with involvement of multiple other agencies, which I'm still worried for, but like I said, there's, now, within the last month, there's been small progress. Like I said, the pickup truck, the small amount of appliances being moved, so it's like.
Progress.
A couple steps forward, yes, and that's, that's what I'm hoping to continue to see.
So, so it doesn't say what are the fines on this one?
So, this one is well over three thousand dollars as well, and Dave Mason did, in fact, um, allow for all of them to stay versus giving them a reduced amount. And so, they are earning ten percent interest for non-payment each month. And so, that's where the majority of the increase is accumulating from, is from the non-payment and the interest that's being accumulated. So, going to court with this one will actually wind up allowing the city to put a lien on this property, and, um.
For abatement, right?
What was that?
The, the lien would be for abatement, is that right?
No, the, the lien would be for payment. So, basically, what might've happening is, if the property is sold, that it would show that there is an outstanding balance that is owed to the municipality. So, that's part of our other problem, is that a cleanup this large and this big of a scale would wind up costing the city a well more than what they already are owing in fines. So, us putting out that dollar amount, we could do it, but we'd also have to attach that amount back in the lien as well, because of the outgo, we, we don't have the funds set up immediately to be able to do that large of a third-party abatement. And so, it's kind of put the city in a position where, yes, we still have the authority and the capability of getting abatement done, but the large scale is a little bit more difficult, where search warrants are, or inspection warrants are required, and getting, getting more, uh, I guess, authority involved.
There may come a time when we may talk to you about doing something like that, but we're not there yet.
And actually, to hear the three thousand dollars, I was in Weed on Saturday, and the mayor of Weed was down there, and they've got some issues downtown, and he was talking about their fines start at five thousand, and go up to ten thousand.
So, the three thousand, like I said, is accumulated at a hundred dollars a day. So, for somebody to start with nothing, and then accumulate three thousand dollars for the fines, that's over a month of non-compliance. And usually, what I wind up doing is, after a month of non-compliance, is when I get a hold of our hearing officer and state, I need a hold of hearing, because these people are refusing to comply, and clearly, the citations aren't doing it. And so, then I go through the whole process, then he kind of allot, you know, what he sees fit, especially when they don't show to the hearing, which, the weed abatement ones I had, they did show. The, um, the other being this large-scale one, she did not. And that, you know, unfortunately, doesn't go well for them, because they can't defend their case, they can't speak to the problems, they can't, um, they're, they're not here, so they don't really understand or see what's going on. So, I present them with a full report, and give them a rundown of what was discussed. Outside of that, you know, it's continued monthly statements, it's continued, um, contact from, you know, my desk, stating that this is outstanding on the property, this needs to be taken care of on the property, and, um, my next move with them, unfortunately, is actually putting it at five hundred dollars a day. So, I'm, I'm hoping that I can get an inspection warrant before that occurs, but I don't, unfortunately, think that's gonna be the case, so. We are now in spring weed abatement season, so as I know, I'm sure most of you are aware, you've gotten them, if you're within the city limits, as an annual weed abatement letter. Um, we've already gotten a great amount of response, of people calling and saying, well, I already have the guy that I had do it last year, and he's gonna do it again for me, or, um, you know, I no longer own this parcel. So, it's actually getting people to reach out and contact, which is what my initial goal was. Not only a little bit of fear, but at the same token, try and get people to understand and comply that, you know, this is a serious matter.
Well, with all the moisture and rain we've had this year, I think we're gonna have a lot of grasses growing, and so, I think in many cases, it's gonna take two or three mowings to comply.
Which is why it stays on all, I think, three or four different areas, that it has to remain that way throughout the entire fire season. And so, if you have to mow your lot multiple times, you have to mow your lot multiple times. And if you're out of compliance, you will be getting notices, because you are out of compliance. So, um, that's why I really, really urged and pushed in, I think, every single one of those sections that states it has to be throughout the entire fire season. And then I've also, um, created a very similar one to the letter, this is what I've actually put out on Facebook. And so, that has gotten shared to the grapevine, it's on the code enforcement page as well, and, um, basically, it's got similar informa- basically, the same information, um, as the notice did, and I will also be reposting this towards the beginning of May, so it just kinda keeps it fresh in people's minds that, you know, we really need to be aware and pay attention to this, and take this seriously. And I, I would say eighty-five, ninety-five percent of the people that I talk to on the phone are like, well, we don't want a car fire, well, we don't want a, and so, the, the, it's very, very prevalent on our minds, and they're very, very adamant about, well, I just wanna make sure that my property was not compliant, like, I don't know, everybody in town's gotten one of these, this is one of the guidelines to make sure that your property stays like this, as it's stating all fire season long, so.
What about the ShopSmart building?
That, actually, I drove by today and was on my list, so that is my next, um.
That was my question, Don Murray, is, what's going on with that, you have to contact the owners?
Yes, yeah.
And they're out of state, they're not even out of town, they're out of state.
Which one is this?
Uh, the old ShopSmart, the old grocery store on Main Street, South Main.
It's all fenced in.
It's fenced, fenced in, but the weeds are growing up between the.
Somebody in it on Monday, so.
Really?
So, uh, well, and that could just be a property manager, if they have, you know, a property man.
Scott Hodgson sees you get hold of the guy who owns it.
Yeah, so, I will, yeah, it'll just be a matter of, um, basically sending, 'cause everybody who owns property is on the mailing list, so they should have gotten the same notice. If I don't hear or see any movement soon from them, 'cause the majority of either the vacant parcels or the large acreage parcels, people have called me and stated, you know, this is what's going on with it, or informed me that this is who they have, and this is where their schedule is, and this is what timeframe they're fitting into that schedule. So, I've already gotten a lot of those, um, so when I don't hear from either a vacant parcel or a large parcel, they get put on my list of, okay, these are my top priority of needing to contact owners. And so, that's, um, they're on my contact list.
I also ask that, because I'm going down the sidewalks, I watched, um, a girl going in a wheelchair, and a lot of these bushes are sticking out so far, that they have to walk, they have to go in the street. So, it's not just weeds.
Yeah, so, almost, that's part of, that's part of maintaining your property.
Yeah.
So, there's, there's, um, shrubbery or landscaping, um, I guess would be in ordinance regarding what you're allowed to have, the height, the size, and the maintenance of that as well.
Okay.
And that's what I have for you.
Awesome.
And that's what I have for you this evening.
Well, great, thank you for your good work on that, I know that when we went to the fire safe meeting that I went to and no one couldn't go, they uh they gave you accolades for your good work, as you know, you were there. They, they think it's great that we have a tough code enforcement office. Who's a woman?
I'm trying, I'm trying. It's, it's definitely um, like I said, I've already seen improvement between this year and last year and um you know, people ask, you know, well, why are the letters coming out so much earlier and I say, you know, I really don't think it's very smart to be chasing this into July when everything's already dead and dry and then you can't mow because the fire, or you know, the mowing, and you can't do afternoon yeah, so you know, then there's the burn van in place and so, you know, if you get a jump on it now, then we won't be chasing this into June, July and unfortunately like I did last year, August, so um, yeah.
No, I'm glad you did, awesome.
Yeah, good job, thank you Willow, any other questions of Willow?
No, it's awesome.
Okay, thank you, keep up the good work, you know, it's a tough job, but you're up to it. Okay, item number five, discussion possible action, adopt resolution approving street closures and other requests for the Waireka Chamber of Commerce, who's the president and executive director here, um for uh special events known as Gold Rush Days, you guys wanna come down to the podium? One or both of you? Bring your baby.
Bring your baby, yeah.
If she doesn't, we got a problem.
So while they're, they're coming, or while she's coming down, we'll just mention that uh this item and the next two items are related because they're with the chamber, but we decided to uh separate them into three separate items so that we could talk about them.
Okay.
There are some differences.
Okay, the first one we're gonna talk about is Gold Rush Days, welcome Amanda.
Thank you. Yeah, so Gold Rush Days is just going to uh pretty much continue as normal, the normal um street closures, we did actually add one area um just in case, we spoke with Gary Nelson and he might have his mining not the carousel, but the little mining town that's kind of in the back there, he might have that open, so we thought that'd be pretty neat to
Didn't he have that open last year?
He did, and they were trying to get it back up, I'm not sure if it was weather or something, it fell, it had fallen down, so he's working to get that back up. So if that's up, we'll have a, a nice route for people to get there and check that out.
Great.
Um so that was the main addition, other than that, um the Beer Garden with Etna Brewing Company. She usually does her beer tent, she'll do that again this year.
On, on Fourth, right? On Fourth Street?
Yeah.
Right on the corner, Fourth Street or?
Yes, but she'll do it, uh she might do it there, or we had her do it down by the stage last year. Because we provided some additional seating so people could watch the band.
Oh, okay.
Um so if she wants to do it there again, that would be great, and we'll have a band which we're working on as well this year, finding a new band. Um we will have all of our street food vendors, merchant vendors, we're trying to get some new vendors and things for kids to do, like a cow milking contest, not an actual cow, but it would be sort of
That's probably a good idea.
Um so we're working on a few new things, but those are just kind of in the works.
So gold mining and cow stuff and
Yeah.
Okay, and how about a wagon, are you guys thinking about doing like a hay wagon or something?
We haven't, uh we've got another meeting here coming up soon where we're gonna go into more depth about um Gold Rush Days and I know that has been a topic of discussion in the past.
Right.
Um and last year, I don't think we pulled it off, I think it was a little late to pull it off.
And you have the gunfighters, are they coming back?
Yeah, the old bus shooters, yep, they're booked and coming again, everybody loves them.
The carousel will not be open?
Um the carousel will not be open, no, uh so we talked to Gary and he said the carousel isn't going to be open, he's not gonna be doing gold panning and the hotel might not be open.
Really?
Wow. Is, is it, is it due, just due to the fact that he didn't foresee Gold Rush Days at this time or?
No, he said that last year for the gold, he bought a large amount of gold for the gold panning and I'm not sure if maybe he didn't have great signage in the area to point where the gold mining was going to be. Uh but he said he didn't get anybody back there. Um and it wasn't for a lack of advertising because those things we advertise very heavily for them, that's one of our huge points on our poster.
Yeah, well, it used to be on Minor Street that was really busy, especially with the kids.
And I think he moved it back into the back recently, and so you have to go through there.
And the carousel, is that a, I mean, 'cause they got something he's really wants to get people into and this would be the optimum time to get kids in and it gives something else for the kids to do, as you were saying.
It would be great, so I know that um Susan talked to him very briefly and I wanted to have another call with him because he had mentioned possibly just needing volunteers. Um but we tried to volunteer um to have it open before and that didn't work out, so I'm not quite sure um
And I know there, there have been some changes with the um, the, I can't remember the name of the event, First Friday or, or Fun and, Fun and Dan.
Family Fun Carnival.
Family Fun Carnival, thank you. That, that um, that actually turned into where we were contacted by another individual on behalf of Mr. Anderson in setting that up and then also the insurance went through Kwanis. So there really has been a, a little bit more of hands off and I, I, you know, I think that you have to respect that. And uh so it's just been done a little bit different way in the past, so it may not be as easy to get the participation with at every event, just based on other, it's still gonna happen, that's cool, I'm, I'm glad Kwanis stepped up to make it happen for the family fun events, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or did you have more Amanda? Okay, any other questions?
I'll make a motion that we approve a resolution approving the street closures and other requests for the Waireka Chamber of Commerce special event known as Gold Rush Days.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, Gold Rush Days, looking forward to it.
Yes.
It's always fun, I love to see all the people downtown. Okay, so next item is item number six and that's discussion possible action. Approver request, a request from the Waireka Chamber of Commerce for the use of the stage for the special event known as Waireka's Fourth, July Fourth Celebration on July Fourth, twenty nineteen. So tell us all about the July Fourth Celebration.
So the July Fourth Celebration will be at the casino, the casino has, um they are working with um local fire department and they're managing that part to put the fireworks on below the casino there. And so then we are trying, we are working with the casino and trying to have, bring a July Fourth event um in association with the fireworks, so it would be an evening event from six to ten. Um so we'd get people there and then have them stay for the fireworks. The stage um would be for a hired band that would play all night, which would be great, and it's also really great advertising, a place to put our banners and things like that for all of the people that are supporting this. Um we already have raised eighty-five hundred dollars for the fireworks. So we are
And your goal is what, ten thousand?
Yeah, so we're very close and we're seeking vendors right now and hopefully we'll have kid events, um different things that evening for everyone to do.
Outside the casino.
Outside.
Yes.
Everything will be outside.
Yeah, okay.
So that's kind of uh our initial planning for the July Fourth event this year.
Um now, um Matt, so your uh staff is in charge of the stage?
Correct.
And that's a holiday?
Correct.
Fourth of July, so how would we handle that and what approximately is the cost for moving, setting up and taking down and taking back the stage?
We have numbers that are um from last year's Gold Rush, but they included, the way that the guys broke down their time cards, they included the barricade setup and tear down for the street closure, so it's a little hard to extrapolate, but um I had another call with Ben, he's gonna have a harder number for me tomorrow. The original policy states, it's thirteen years old, Rezo that came across the deck here.
Yes.
And it was uh obviously it's, it's dated now, but that standing policy says it's two hundred and fifty dollars to rent the stage, there's a, and that's supposed to take over the maintenance, the annual maintenance of the stage and the setup and tear down. But when you're looking at two fully loaded, full-time benefited employees, um it's not covering it. But, and then there's a, if you head out of town, there's a mileage cost on it too, so Ben and I are dialing down, trying to get a, a harder exact number out of it, um it's more than the two fifty that's stated in the policy.
Well, yeah, I thought that was low when I saw it and uh and the thing is, is that we have had some losses on the stage when it's hanging around sometime and so that's over and beyond the cost of the employees, so we've, we've got some concerns about keeping the stage safe. So how do we do that if it's a holiday?
I think we, we talked to um Brandon at the casino, I'm trying to remember if it was at the workshop or a separate conversation, but um and I don't know that we decided whether to set it up the day before and then take it down the day after, that's something I think public works is still, still looking at. We put in a, a round number of about six hundred bucks for what we thought it would cost between some equipment and staffing. Now, that's a rough estimate, as Matt mentioned, they're going to be trying to dial that down, but um casinos are very camera happy places in terms of surveillance, so
Oh, that's a good thing.
Probably in terms of a place that would have the most uh surveillance on the stage, if it stayed there overnight, either one night or two nights. It, it's probably one of the most surveilled uh areas in the city outside, you know, in terms of the outdoors. If you have indoors, probably the casino is still safer.
Well, they have their own security too.
It, it brings a level of comfortability to myself and, and our guys that um we can set it up and leave it, so it's gonna drop, we can come back, right, it's holiday pay.
Okay, 'cause otherwise it's double time. Yeah, it's holiday pay, which is double time.
Fourth of July, the guys are all supposed to be off, so number one, we have to find volunteers.
Exactly.
And then we'll hopefully be able to come back the next day and grab it.
Meaning not free employees, meaning employees that are volunteering for double time.
Who are willing to come in and work.
Yeah.
Right, yeah.
On Fourth of July.
So in this, in this um marriage, the chamber and the casino, can you explain their relationships to me of both uh in, in, within putting together this July Fourth event?
Yeah, so the casino is, um since they're doing the fireworks right there, they're just simply providing us with a venue to have our festival.
Okay, and they're, so they're not
They're, they're also providing funding.
Yes, I was gonna say, they're providing a chunk of the money.
They, yeah, they, they donate for the fireworks.
They put up five thousand, exactly.
So the fireworks portion of the money and then um the portion of the money for like vendors and things like that, those are kind of so the event and the fireworks are two separate entities.
And my concern is that we're dealing with a profit, for-profit and we're going to let them take a stage.
Right.
Which is a nominal, two hundred and fifty dollars is nominal for that stage, my concern as a council member is
Sure.
is really putting it out there for a profit agents, they're a for-profit and, and I, I appreciate everything they do in the community.
Absolutely.
But we're also looking at, they're gonna gain from this also.
Right.
And, and I appreciate what the chamber's doing, but the chamber's not making a, a dime on it.
No.
The casino quite possibly would be
So, so there's a couple of reasons why um, why I kinda looked at, at uh, at this one differently than the next one. And so let me give you the rationale and then, then maybe we can, we can talk about it. One is that um July Fourth is, is a, would be a relatively big event.
It's a holiday.
And um and actually even though it's moving from the fairgrounds to the casino parking lot in terms of actually, I don't know exactly where they're shooting the fireworks off from, but it's set to the same basin if you will.
Someplace safe, I hope.
Well, some, yeah, someplace safe, they gotta do that with the, we don't have the fire guys here, but they do, they do take a look at it.
Oh, they laugh, yeah.
Well, yeah, they have lives, you know, you know. Um so, so there was, uh there was that. Another thing is, is that in terms of sponsorships, and I don't know the relationship on this event, but when we were talking about the um stage, it uh, it provides a venue as, as Amanda mentioned, to put up sponsors so that you can go and ask people for sponsorships and then give them the, the recognition. And the, the third thing is, is that although when, when I wrote the memo, I was, I, I was not sure that this was happening, but is that this looks like one of the events that the chamber will be looking at in terms of their
Future.
agreement going on through for nineteen twenty. So for me, this seemed like an event that would be a, a major event and it seemed like having the stage is part of it, even though it is on, on private property uh or well sovereign
It's not on the streets of Waireka.
It's not on the streets of, right, it, but it would be up there. Um so anyway, that, that was my rationale for, for getting there, I can, I can understand different ways of looking at it, 'cause I went through that, so So your, your recommendation is that we allow it, that they pay the two hundred and fifty dollar fee? Um actually, my recommendation is that we waive it like we did, do for regular um the, what I call city sponsored events, although we try not to say that very loud, 'cause we want the chamber's insurance to cover it.
Right.
So I'll think of a different word after a while, so that the insurance people don't gonna have to
Support it.
So that, that was, that was my rationale, there, you could do something different if you wanted to, but
A point.
So a couple of things about that, you know, you gotta think in terms to, this was an event that the chamber did put on a long time ago.
Years.
Long, long time ago. And uh we haven't seen that in a long time, and so I, I like the idea of, of the chamber putting it back on, I really do, I think it's great. I think we need to keep people here locally during the Fourth of July, Mount Shasta has their thing going on, but that's Mount Shasta, we need to have our thing going on back here. Um as far as the stage, yeah, it's um as long as, and I didn't see in this contract that um I'm, I'm fine with them using the stage as long as there's verbiage in there that any vandalism or any um theft that's done that we don't get we don't have to pay for it, 'cause it has been, the electrical cords have been stolen before during events and so that needs to be in that, that they're stated that we're not, that the chamber or whoever needs to be responsible for any theft or anything that
Well, replacement or anything.
Yeah, replacement of those things.
Absolutely.
Other than that, I'm, I'm all for it, I wanna see it happen.
So that is spoken to explicitly in the stage rental contract.
In the contract.
In the rental contract, okay, that's why I see in this is why
So we're talking about waiving it, since it is a Fourth of July and it's a very popular, popular event to, to keep people here. Um I think that though we do need to take a close look at the actual cost of the stage for future use.
For future.
I'm not talking about, talking about, not talking about this, but uh for future use of other organizations, because we need to at least be able to pay for our staff time.
Right, and that actually is part of the, the next item discussion, but you're only slightly ahead of me, but since they're all related, that's fine.
That's okay, I like to stay ahead of you.
Sounds good.
I'd like to make a motion then, to approve a request from the Waireka Chamber of Commerce for the use of the city stage for the special event known as Waireka Fourth of July Celebration on July Fourth, two thousand nineteen.
And waive the?
And, and waive the fees, yes, I'll know.
Okay, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, awesome. Okay, that's gonna be a fun event.
Yes.
Okay, so the next item is item number seven. Discussion possible action, provide staff direction regarding a request from the Waireka Chamber of Commerce for the use of the city stage for the special event known as Spring Pling Car Show on May twenty fifth, twenty nineteen. Steve?
Yes, mayor members of council, this is one that I looked at differently than the July Fourth event. Uh actually almost for the same reasons that uh Councilman Corey mentioned. That, this event seemed to me to be more of a localized event at the, the casino and probably not an event that I would be recommending to you uh be part of the events under the chamber contract. So to me, that puts it into a, a different category, that's the, the first part of it. The second part of this, what you were bringing up mayor, is that uh when we, we have this policy, which I have a copy of here, um and I actually signed it, so, but it's locked on you, that has the stage rental at two hundred and fifty dollars, it probably costs us closer to Matt, I'll get the numbers, but
More than six hundred, probably closer to a thousand.
To do it uh in the back of this particular agenda item, what we wanted to show you too is what the um, the stage
The fairgrounds?
The, the fairgrounds stage, kind of, it's in a box in the middle of your page there and then also, so, and it shows the, the wi- winger wing, winger stage is a thousand dollars to the, the public.
Public.
And in addition, the box down at the bottom says um
Setup and tear down.
will be determined by the CEO of Case by Case, but, and I think that that's, you know, when they send it off to another fair, I think that they're letting the other fair set it up and take it down, if the other fair knows what they're doing, but for um the public, they're not. And the, the winger stage, my understanding is it's a little smaller than ours, uh the portable premier stage
Is a little bigger.
Great name, is, I think significantly bigger.
Bigger, yeah.
And so that's more, so I kinda wanted to do two things with that, is one is to, to show that probably two hundred and fifty dollars is, is added flat, is what it, what it costs. Uh some of you were on the council when we tried to um we, we at one point said, hey, the fairgrounds is in the stage business, maybe what we should do is work out a deal where they have the stage most of the time re-reserve the stage for the, the events that were, it's being used for now. Uh mainly the concert series is the big user, and as well as Gold Rush Days and there was something else. Um, but at that point, the council decided it didn't really wanna give up, uh, control of the stage. And so I'm, I'm looking at this and saying, okay, number one, the two fifty doesn't even cover the staff costs. And number two, and part of the reason we were looking at having the fair take it over is that they can then establish, they could establish a, um, rent a calls of sinking fund, if I got the right term?
A sinking fund or a fair value?
Well, no, they could establish a fund in order to repair or replace the stage as it ages. Because at some point, you have to do major repairs each year on, uh.
And that's our fear.
Right, around June one, we get the stage ready to go, so we go out and we put everything together. And Matt can tell me where I'm wrong on this, but, you know, basically get it ready to go, and it's ready to go from June one to, to whatever.
Well, I know, and that was when we discovered, one year when they went to get it ready to go, that there were, there were a lot of items missing from the stage that cost the city a lot of money to, to replace.
So, um, so.
I don't know where they went.
The, um, so writing down this, first of all, um, I wasn't inclined to recommend, uh, waiving the, the stage fee. Second of all, our policy hasn't, because of prep time, it starts June one normally, um, for the stage, you know, they're, we get it ready to go, so June one it goes out. This is, this is like a week ahead of time, so, you know, we can be flexible in that policy if, if we're looking to do that. Uh, subsequent to the writing of this memo, I did talk to the, the chamber, we've met a couple of times, and we'll update you a little bit further in the agenda here, uh, that we're, we're making some progress. But, um, kinda asked, you know, sort of, you know, this is what I'm recommending, and they said, well, if we could still get the stage for the two fifty, it again would provide the same benefit of allowing them to put sponsors up there, which otherwise is fairly difficult at a, at a car show. You can do it, but it's, it's, uh, so. So, um, having said that, I'm not, well, I guess, actually Amanda, where was she?
Amanda's here.
She had to sit down.
She's sitting down.
Please, please do whatever is necessary.
She's sitting down. I'm about to stand up, because my back is out.
Yeah, sure.
And I can't sit for that long, so you sit and I'll stand, how's that?
So, the, this probably is a multi-part thing. The first is whether or not you would want to waive the fee. That would be one. The second one, uh, the mayor already mentioned wanting to examine the, uh, the policy and the costs going forward. And then the third would be, would you want to, uh, sort of amend the, it's really a relatively small amendment of the policy, but would you want to allow the stage to go out for two hundred and fifty dollars to this event or not? And, and knowing that you're also, um, spending more than that to get it there. In other words, we're still ending up subsidizing the event, but technically that's what the, right today, that's what the rate is.
Well, that's currently right now is our, our rental is two fifty, that's standardized. We haven't changed that yet, so.
That's why we have to change it.
Well, I realize that, but on, I mean, I don't, I.
We have two staff members that are jumping in their seats right now. I think they wanna address that.
I think that might also be Memorial Day weekend, another holiday.
If they're doing it.
Oh, that's true.
Oh, that means it would be double time for staff.
No, they're setting, they're setting up for.
It would be, uh, holiday weekends are a lot of times where, where employees have a, they have a life, and so they.
Hard to get the people to volunteer.
But they're, they're setting it up on the twenty fourth though, and taking it down on the twenty eighth.
Oh, and Rheta has something to say.
So I originally had the stage in finance, so I was glad that all of that, but Mary Christmas.
Somehow got dumped on.
Liz.
You just gave it to me this morning, but still, who do I give it to?
The, um, the two fifty, actually, fee rental does go in a sinking fund, it's resource one oh one five.
The two fifty, but it doesn't cover the cost.
It was never meant to cover labor. It was for the stage rental.
But we were never supposed to set it up.
Correct.
These people were never supposed to do that.
It was a Ford Foundation, City of Wairega, a private donation grant.
Right.
Um, the commitment from the private was the ongoing setup and set down. But what became problematic very early on in the program was getting the volunteers trained to actually, um, set up the stage and set it down. And Matt, you probably ended up in part of those events way back when.
From the beginning when I was a boss.
During the beginning.
Ray's done it, from when he was with the chamber.
But, but at the, and so that, when that rate was established, that was the premise. Always if there was a cost from city crew or city hauling, that was meant to be contemplated as an add-on charge. So I just kinda wanted to clarify that.
However, that stage is gonna wear out, the more it's used, and the older it gets, it's gonna wear out. So where's the replacement coming from?
Oh, two fifty as a sinking fund is nothing. That was just the maintenance.
We hardly ever charge the two fifty. It's almost always waived. Waived at Scott Valley, waived at the chamber. And we have maybe two people a year that pay the two fifty.
We might need to take a closer look at that.
I took a closer look, and I had our fleet manager, Tim Shaw, run some quick num, or run the numbers, not quick numbers. They are hard numbers. Um, Tim, our, the fleet division took, took ownership of the stage in August, August thirtieth of two thousand and five, and he added up the repair orders on things that were broken.
Almost twenty years.
Um, and there was seventeen hundred twenty-nine dollars in broken items that needed repair. Um, this is not counting just the periodic maintenance of greasing and oiling and, and that. So it's not all that expensive, but it is a chunk. And then there was what, um, Dwayne spoke to, the two extension cords that were stolen. Then that was about one thousand eighteen dollars to replace the two extension cords.
Yeah, there was the specified extension cords.
It, it adds up, that's just the fleet inspection and repairing broken items. On top of that is what Rheta was speaking to, is my crews have always pulled it out of the shed, washed it, detailed it, cleaned it up, set it up, let it dry out, get it right, perfect, go. Cause that's, that's not something the fleet manager or, or our mechanic needs to be doing. So it's always fallen on the parks budget. And it's one of those, again, there's so many things that just get shoved into the parks budget and eaten up, and, and that's one of them. So this number is, I would say, a very, very small percentage of what we've spent on the stage since oh five.
So it's at least three, same three to.
It's just not taken up, because the parks employees do it, and they just put that they worked in the parks for eight hours that day, but they didn't specify.
But so to say it's three to five thousand dollars maybe.
Steve.
That's a weird more.
Well, can we go back to the three things? We have three things that we're, so we don't get off track. We're looking, we're looking at, go ahead.
Uh, the first one is whether to.
Did you wanna add to it?
You wanna go? Uh, whether to waive the, um, the stage fee for this event, that's number one. Uh, the second is whether to reexamine the fee in, in total. In other words, if the two hundred and fifty is, uh, the wrong number. And then the third is whether to, um, if you will, bend the policy of June one, or however you wanna look at it, to allow the stage to be used at this particular event, only paying the existing, uh, rental rate.
Thank you.
Right, so.
Those are our three options, Steve.
Well, the three, three se, I think three sequence, those are three sequence additions.
One of you guys.
Well.
Go ahead.
The problem I have is it's a private venue over there, casino. The stage basically was to be used at city events like the Minor Street Park on Minor Street. I have a problem with it moving over there to the private casino. For Fourth of July, no problem. Cause that's a national holiday, big event, but for something else, I just can't go for it. And number two, it's Memorial Day weekend is gonna cost us more money. The current fee is not correct, we're not charging the right amount of money. I'd say we can approve it.
My, my question on that though, is going back to it, is this, we already have basically a rental agreement on this thing that's, I know it doesn't say anything about labor on that, but it does say we do charge two fifty for the rental agreement. It states on the contract right now, basically. So basically, so basically, my, I look at this as we almost have to honor a contract, but we don't have to honor the labor force on, that goes behind it.
Or we can decline the request.
Well, that's true too.
It's out of the timeline, too.
And the fact that we're charging two hundred and fifty for it, that's not chamber's fault. That's our fault.
Oh, no.
That is squarely on us.
Right, that's why we need to do that.
So I wanna make that clear, because, you know, that's, that's something that we need to deal with. We've let it go, and.
Yes, I agree.
And the council needs to, you know, stay up with it and help, and help the city out to make that decision to raise. So I'm gonna say, that was number two you put out. That needs to co, needs to go back to you guys. And you need to come back with some, with a couple of solutions, in my opinion. One of them being the cost. The other being, as Dwayne said, do we change a contract to, to put the cost in and then the labor?
I think so.
So, I mean, you're not gonna go to a, well, you're, you're, you're not gonna use a stage in Jacksonville or, or actual, or something like that, at Lithia Park or whatever, and not, I mean.
Not pay a thousand dollars.
And I'm not saying we get top dollars, not, those dollars are for.
Right, right.
But we, we, we are stewards of, of our taxpayers, and we have to make sure that, you know, if we're gonna go back to the well and, in ten years and say, well, we need another stage, what's it gonna be, twenty-five thousand or thirty thousand? Well, we're gonna take.
Eighty.
Eighty thousand.
It's actually eighty, we looked at this once before.
And we're gonna, we're gonna, taxpayers, we're gonna take your money, because, you know.
Yeah, that's why we have to.
So.
Okay, so, um, any more discussion, one more, and then I want, I would like to hear a motion.
Well, I've made a motion for, cause we're doing three separate things here, right?
No, no. Well, yeah. Well, no, he's got three decision makers. We decided the three.
Well, you could, you could do it all in one motion, um.
Okay.
But, so, but I wanna make sure, cause I heard the first two for sure.
Okay.
One was, uh, and I, I've now heard it from two councilmembers, so I'm, I'm gonna try, I'm gonna, uh, say what I think you said.
Mm-hmm.
Which was not to waive the fee. Uh, so that's the first one. The second one is to send it back to staff to look at the costing for the, um, stage rental and setup in the future.
In the future is the key.
In the future, we can't do it now.
Right. And then, and then the third has to do with whether to, um, whether to allow the stage to go out anyway at the old rental rate. Recognize it's outside the window of, that we normally would do, but whether to, for this particular event, or to just decline it, period, for this.
And, and I wanna make it clear that I think all of us appreciate what the chamber's doing.
Absolutely.
Okay? That this is not a reflection.
No, this is something different.
Nothing. This is something we've gotta deal with.
I just wanted to point out, I didn't get Amanda to come up and, and talk about the event on this, because I knew the discussion had nothing to do with.
We had a bigger, bigger discussion on it.
I think it's a great event.
Yeah.
Okay, now, it's Debbie's turn. Councilmember.
I'm aging here.
The guys were talking loud.
Okay, I have a question regarding the policy. Is it the policy of the city to rent the stage out to any entity, whether it be business or personal?
Within the city limits. Outside the city limits, only cities or districts.
Right.
Specifically.
Okay, but within the city limit of, um, the home show could rent it, or a church could, okay, gotcha. Okay, and the other thing is, talking about the future policy, I would think cost plus ten percent, ten percent going into the future fund to maintain it. But, um, thank you for clarification.
I like that. I like that idea, actually.
If I could add on to that.
Certainly, Matt.
Madam Mayor, um, it's my preference when writing policy to utilize actual cost within the policy and if we could into the res, the reso. The reason we're sitting here tonight, thirteen years after that two fifty was set, if it would've been actual cost, we could've saved half the time tonight. So I would've come to you and said, this is how much two maintenance workers cost, this is what a truck costs, this is what it's gonna cost, this is what we need to charge.
Oh. Okay.
So you wanna add current cost, rather than the specific.
Actual, current, actual costs of.
Cost plus ten percent.
Right, so that's how I would craft the policy around this to bring back to you. Um, that was my intent for the last couple of months.
And the original document never was to con, contemplated the labor in that cost.
Right.
So labor was never part of that two fifty.
Well, I understand, but the.
It wasn't meant to be.
However, the approval wasn't at staff level. The approval has always been at council level.
It was volunteer.
Correct. Understood.
Right?
Yep.
So we had that option?
Yes. Yes.
Uh, Don Marie.
I just have a question. Um, if the car show was on Minor Street, would this still be an issue with the stage?
I don't know, we wouldn't do what if, probably, we'd have to be on a, by case by case basis, for me.
Minor Street only has the cost of the roads, which is Matt's department. But no, it's not a for-profit. In other words, if it were downtown, it would only be for the nonprofit, which is the chamber, not for a, a for-profit. And by the way, the casino made its highest profit that it's made in the first year last month.
Excellent.
Which is great.
That's good.
But I don't, I still, I guess I'm confused. I don't still see where the, the casino's profiting off of the stage. This is a, a chamber event, not.
It's a draw to the, to the.
It's just a draw, so it would be the Fourth of July that we just approved too, so, I mean.
But this isn't a national holiday.
No, true, true, but it is a chamber event.
It would be similar to, say, taking, um, the stage and, I'm just trying to think of somewhere else and, and throwing it over in the, uh.
The home show.
The Rayleigh's parking lot or something like that, and say, hey, we're gonna put it up here, we're gonna shoot fireworks off over here, and then you've got all these people out there that, not just Rayleigh's, but they wanna, you know, they can stay open, and those businesses are definitely gonna benefit from the uptick in traffic. So I mean, I mean, it wouldn't be fair for me, say, in my business, to say, you know, hey, I want you guys to bring it over here and.
Come to Seers, come to Seers, have your.
We're gonna have a, we're gonna have a good time. It's, I, if I were gonna have it over there, it would, if, if I were to pay to get it over there, it's gonna cost me several thousand dollars to get a private stage up here, cause I, I've done it before with my record stores in Southern California, and that was thirty years ago. There was several thousand dollars to get a stage to have a band.
They're for-profit, I agree.
Do, do you wanna take the first two items first? Those seem like there's a general agreement on that one, on those two.
The first, the, oh, you're talking about the first two items on this?
The first, the first two.
So the first thing would be, uh, the, going back, uh, to reset the policy. The second thing is what?
Whether to waive the fee for this event.
Right, and the third thing?
Whether to waive the date, starting date.
So that, so that they could have the stage for two hundred and fifty dollars.
For the, this event on May twenty fifth?
Yes.
Okay, you want us to vote on all three of those separately? We can't have one motion.
I, I don't, I don't care, but I haven't heard consensus on the last one yet. I'm willing to work with whatever the, you know, that.
Okay, and do I have a motion on any of those?
Well, on, on the last part of it, I, quite honestly, I'd be willing to do that, as, as long as they set up and tear down then, cause that would be part of the, that original.
That's been part of the problem.
Original, the pro, the original document, you know, that we did.
Who set up?
Who set up?
I need more clarification in the, in the.
They, they would be in the sense.
No.
Um, so.
Well, the setup and teardown requires training.
The chamber and setup and teardown, you mean?
Property do it, yeah.
That's where we've had losses.
It would cost us to train them to, what, you know, if you think about it, you've gotta put in the time to train them, so you're not saving anything by having them set up for this specific event.
Yes and no, or you bring in somebody that has done it, and, you know, Carl's set up numerous times, and.
Carl's not gonna set it up.
So, I mean, somebody that might, I don't know, I'm just saying that, just cause.
You, you might need to take them one at a time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And be real specific on the motion, please.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that we ask the city, uh, staff to, uh, reexamine our contract in regards to, um, how we rent the stage, what we charge for the stage, and what we, uh, might need to charge for setup and takedown if it's in fact, if we're in fact going to be doing that, along with what Debbie said, an additional percentage, whether it's five, ten, fifteen, twenty, in order to, um, fund a new stage at eighty thousand dollars.
So, a new policy.
Review the stage policy.
Yeah.
Review, right, and have staff bring that up.
And rates, also.
And rates, okay. Have a motion, have a second. Is everybody clear on the motion? Liz mainly.
I hope so.
Okay, so staff reexamine the stage rental setup, take down policy, allowing, allowing.
And technicality, is it actual resolution that we adopted, so we would amend the resolution that was adopted by city council in two thousand and six?
Right, so we'll bring that back.
And, and for, as for a timeline, I would like to have it in effect by, uh, Christmas of next year, or Christmas.
Christmas. Christmas.
You're not gonna, you can't retroactively, you can't go back and retro, I, I would like it by December.
Well, not retroactive, but certainly this year.
Well, that's this year.
July first?
Do, do we have, do we have any, um, stage reservations?
July first, July first is our new year.
None that are paying a fee.
I, that, you can't be.
We, we don't, at this time, we have no stage reservations that are paying a fee.
We have two that apply.
I still don't think it's fair for us to pass a new fee and go to people who might have been used to the two hundred and fifty dollar fee. And we go, well, we're gonna charge you five hundred dollars, plus there's gonna be, you know, six hundred, seven hundred dollar setup fee, I, I.
Clarification on that, though. Those that rented outside of the area did take care of the setup and set down.
Was that the bank?
The, I think it was, one was the church, the Bluegrass Festival, Nazarene Church, um, has used it.
No, it was, the Bluegrass Festival.
And, um, I think those are the only outside, and then, um, the Scott Valley Bank concerts, because we were active on that, it went down to weed, right?
And merchants' bank.
I'll clarify that further, that Carl Greiner went with the stage. He towed the stage most times. He towed the stage most times, most times he towed it with a city vehicle, and was there to point and say, crank this.
He did, he did a great job, yeah.
We had Carl that knew how to set the stage, at that point, all he needed was warm bodies.
Okay.
Well, I think that also needs to be included, not Carl, but that needs to be specified in the contract, and I'm fine with July, but I, I mean. There's other stuff they gotta do, and so it's not, it's not as for me as if, you know.
Carl, Carl's in charge of the cart now, so we're not gonna send him on the stage, so.
That's, that's what I just said, yeah.
Did you wanna say something? Do you have your hand up?
I'm a scout kicker.
Okay, uh Norm.
Can we get this done in sixty days or ninety days? We don't need to wait till Christmas.
Six months.
I don't see.
I just said by then, that's what I said, that would be the ultimate deadline.
Yeah, we, we probably would um be able to do it before that, okay, so.
May, June, July, August, September, October, pretty darn close, that's six months, could we do it before six months? You're looking at me blankly.
Yeah, we, we could.
We can do it with inside of six months.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, now, let's make sure that we have your motion correctly. Liz, can you read back his motion?
Stage staff to reexamine our contract, I'm gonna change that to resolution.
Resolution.
To um review actual costs and time, setup and take down, plus a percentage to fund the replacement of the stage.
Okay.
Dress on, okay, Debbie, about the funding replacement?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, does the second agree? Okay, the motion has been read, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries. So, that's number one, so number two is what?
Uh uh the waiver of the um fee for the stage.
For this event?
For this event, yes.
But isn't the cart before the horse? If we vote on whether or not to do supply for the event, then we wouldn't need part two.
Probably.
Yeah, we have to expand, don't we have to expand the timeline first?
Yes, you have to amend, that's part of amending the policy, the policy right now is, it starts June one, and they're asking for us to amend our policy.
Okay.
Right, oh, I see what you mean, yeah, that would be part and part, in other words, the, uh probably um a waiver of the policy in this case.
Or a motion.
Okay.
So.
So, we're, we're looking for a motion one way or the other, to either to waive or to charge the current two fifty or to decline.
Okay, I never change a bid in the middle, once I've put the number out there, so I'd say I move to keep the number as presented to the client.
Right, I second.
And there's a second part of that, what about the timeline? To, to bend the policy to allow it to go out before June one?
It'd have to be before June one then too.
See, our staff doesn't take it out of of uh of storage until June one.
Gotcha.
And clean it up, so it would be, we, it would require more staff time.
You would come out about two weeks early, two weeks early to get it out, yeah.
So we're, we're holding steadfast to the policy on the price, but we're bending the policy, so it's.
So.
Yes.
So that's gotta be all part of it.
It's gotta be part of this, so just.
Yes, it does, so I would add on to that uh to allow to move sooner.
For this event.
Yes, for this.
Specifically for this event.
You think that this event should have a stage, because when we started.
No, I don't, that's why I said we should.
We, when we started the car show, there was no stage.
I'm really confused, I thought you were just moving to allow it for this event at two fifty.
We're not there yet.
Oh, okay.
No, because that's why I said we should vote whether or not we should support it going for this event first.
I understand what you were saying.
Yeah.
Okay, is that a motion?
Saying don't put the car before the horse.
Now.
Somebody make a motion, please, it's uh eight o'clock, and we don't wanna be here till ten.
Okay, but I'd like the second one or the third one first, because.
What's the third one?
The third one's the two fifty.
No, the third one would be whether or not we're going to support the stage going for this specific event.
Which is what Norm said, so Norm, do you have a motion?
No. So, alright, so let me, the, the staff recommendation if for um was that the council denied the request. From the Wyreka Chamber of Commerce for use of the city stage for the special event known as Spring Fling Car Show. Uh on May twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen.
Right, and this is not an event that is in their contract.
But if, if there's no motion, it dies, it dies. If there's no motion that's put out, put forward, then it, then it dies.
Then the policy stands and it's not available on June one.
Yeah, it, it, it dies, that's, that's the way it works.
See, you made it harder on us.
Yeah.
Needed.
I, I knew this was going to be the long item.
Yes.
And I'm glad Amanda sat down.
Poor Amanda, poor baby.
Yeah, no kidding.
Okay, so, and when's the baby due?
May ninth.
Oh my, so you're not gonna be there on May twenty-fifth?
I might be.
Oh, right, how many kids do you have?
She'll be there in a convertible.
In a convertible.
Yeah, I think Volkswagen.
There you go, oh, I like the Volkswagen, yeah. Okay, so if I don't have a motion, then it dies, is that correct?
Right.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a motion? Three times, do I have a motion? Okay, it dies. Sorry about that, you got, hey, you got two out of three.
Thank you, Amanda, very much, for everything you're doing.
Thank you, and Nancy.
And Nancy, thank you.
And Nancy, okay, we're on the last item, ha- uh, no, second to the last. Hey, discussion possible action, acceptance of the city of Wyreka's audited financial statement fiscal year twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. And I know that the auditor was here and that Paul and Norm were here, you guys have a report?
We had the meeting yesterday, the audit investment and finance committee.
Hmm.
And we're very happy with the audit, they uh presented a very clean audit of the city. And uh we're very happy with that we've uh switched auditors and got another look at it, and they've changed the financial presentation. The only key things we have to worry about is our pension liabilities, that is a big liability in the future. And the discount rate has supposedly dropped from seven point one five down to seven, I think, is that correct, Reda, did you?
I will email that out, Norm, I forgot to, I did do some preparatives, if you wanna take that and add it to your package. Um but um.
It's passed over, huh?
Right, and um, but I'll, I'll email out that rate as a follow-up item, I apologize.
You need one just to stay there with you, Liz.
Okay.
Oh, she was saying that, I need glasses, this is too small.
I won't say it.
I can flash it on the screen, but it's already a late night, so I do, we'll just stay with it as it is, yeah, but Norm, please continue.
Well.
No, I'm kidding. But Norm, sorry, the discount rate is dropping, and I'll get that exact number to you.
I'll keep up.
Yeah, okay.
So that discount rates means we're gonna have to pay more in our pension liabilities in future years.
That they raise.
Well, but dropped it, which means we owe more money each year, because they expect less of a return.
Right.
And it, it's dropped several times now, so hopefully it won't drop again, or the cities throughout all of California are gonna be really squeezed. And have to, you know, reduce our operating expenses to just keep up with the pension expense.
Yeah, there's already talk at Lake of Cities, there are several cities that have been talking about bankruptcy, because of, because of purse.
Yeah.
Because there's too many people that are retiring and living too long.
Yeah.
But overall, the auditor was very uh pleased with our cities, and we're in pretty good financial state. And there's no major problems, so other than the warning about the future pension costs, I think we should approve the, accept the audit.
Okay.
Um to clarify that discount rate for nineteen twenty will be seven percent, it's in a three-year ratchet down.
Right, yeah.
Seven percent from what?
From, um it was.
Seven point one five.
Yeah, that, that was the most recent one, wasn't it, seven and a half?
I think it was seven and a half.
And then seventeen eighteen was seven point three seven five, eighteen nineteen was seven and a quarter, and now nineteen twenty is seven percent.
Okay.
So that's weird, it's one of those things where if the, if the interest rate is lower, then the cost is higher, is that correct?
Right, basically, it's similar to, to if you're planning for your retirement.
Or making less money.
And all of a sudden, you're gonna make less interest, yeah, you gotta work longer, so that's where we are.
Anything else, Reda?
Um.
Or Norm or Paul?
We're gonna stay, we've still got some more committee work um that we didn't get to, so we're gonna meet again on some other issues.
Okay.
With the ADI um as availability of everybody, so, thank you.
Okay, awesome, great, uh do we have to make a motion to accept?
You should.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept the city of Wyreka's audited financial statements for fiscal year twenty seventeen dash eighteen.
I'll second it.
Okay, Norm and Paul, we have a motion and a second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carries, great, good work, you guys. Okay, uh we're down to number nine, which is Steve, it's the Steve Show, city manager staff reports, oh, and Matt, and Reda, and Liz, hey Liz, you gotta report.
So, I, I have, uh, my, my first item is an update on the contract prices, or, I don't know what I said. Contract process, I also wrote the air-conditioned uh future counseling, but that's a different.
Yeah.
At the bottom, um.
I just wanna.
Thank you.
I, I thought you guys said you got rid of the uh, of the spider webs, but I'm still, maybe it's just a shadow, instead of shadow.
That's a shadow, yeah.
I think the web is gone, good job whoever did it.
My understanding is the webs are, the webs are gone, the spiders have left the building.
Yeah, those are pretty.
For those of you watching at home, there were spider webs that we, we took care of, so.
Thank you, and lighting.
Anyway.
Norm's got light now.
Paul, can you see now?
He wasn't here last time. I'm blind anyway.
So, earlier we moved to the fact, and this was also the subject of a workshop that we held previously, that we are in negotiations with the uh the chamber. Uh, we've met twice this week, including a, a meeting this afternoon, uh with um. Amanda and Brandon, whose last name I don't remember anyway, but.
Bathea.
Bathea, thank you. And uh so we had, I think, a good discussion, and we're talking about uh ways that we get closer between. Uh what I think the council wants and what the um the chamber is looking for. Uh there is a um, a discussion that we will probably have to have, there, there was a discussion about. Uh moving, if we move the chamber office, or, no, they're good, if we desired the tourism appro- uh. Tourism center to be at a different location, that we would need to discuss how to make that happen, because there is a, a cost to that. There's some other terms too that we're working uh through in terms of the uh the term and so on, but uh, you know, the negotiators there need to also talk with their board to make sure that they're.
Right, right.
So anyway, I, I, I don't know, uh I thought we made progress today.
Good.
And um I think we'll come back with a proposal that will be a lot closer, there may still be some things that um. There may be options on as we go through it, but I think we're gonna try to tie down as many things as we can, and then look at the options at that point, so.
Good, that's great, you guys made progress.
You plan to bring it back at the next council meeting, or it'll be further on?
Um at this point, uh uh we, we've talked to staff for, to the chamber. And it's gonna depend a, a little bit on whether they can get, uh because, because I have some other commitments next week. We may or may not make the second, but we're gonna try to shoot for that, and if we could, if we're there, I may put a placeholder on and then bring it up, we'll see.
In May.
So, either uh May second or as a failsafe, May sixteenth. Uh by May sixteenth, I know for sure that we will bring back.
Makes sense, yeah.
Something is, is what I'm thinking, but if we can do it on the second, that would be good for a number of reasons.
Yeah, yeah, sooner the better.
Okay.
Done, okay.
Anything to add? No, okay, well, good, glad you guys are making progress, awesome, okay, Matt?
No matter.
No report? Liz?
Just one thing for the record, I think we all heard, Matt's doing the stage? Just wanna make sure the record reflected.
I also have mastered the art of delegation. Already off my desk.
He does have. He has, he has, he has people.
Yes, I don't have people.
Right.
He'll allow his people, give it you.
So, I did have one other brief uh item, I just wanted to.
You finished, okay, Reda? Go ahead, it's okay.
We, the, the city has a practice of lowering the flag in honor of former council members and, and mayors.
Right, right.
And we did lower the flag for, I may be saying his name wrong, I hope not, but it's Joe Ocado. Who also was a firefighter with the city for a number of years and served on uh as a city council member, so. In his honor, we did have the flag down for a five-day period, where we usually, the, the, the time period is either five days. Or if the service is sooner than that, so.
Well, I'm glad you told us, I wondered what it was down for.
Yeah, but I, I think it's important to, to notice those kinda things, and that happened after the last council meeting, so I did wanna let you.
Just let him so with an email too, it's a good idea, when you do.
I, I, I drafted the email and didn't hit send, so that's why I'm updating that.
We got quite a few emails from you the last two weeks.
I, I know, and, and, and you would not believe how many of them sat on my desk for a whole day before I hit send, and I evidently haven't caught up with all of them.
To think about it or to add.
Sometimes that's a good deal to do, just to sit there.
Well, yeah, there are some advantages occasionally, and sometimes the.
Me, I think I hit the, sorry.
Sometimes it, it changes in between, so, anyway, that's all I have.
I thought somebody was trying to break a window or something, that was you.
No, I think, I think.
Okay, Reda, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, okay.
Okay, Paul?
Um I did wanna thank Jen Ausworth, she's not here, because although I know this, what she's talking about is not like real heavy on the police's blotter. Um it makes sense to, you know, we learned that Matt's already working on new signs and, and that kinda thing, and it's been an ongoing thing, and. I always tell people, I, I, I'm not afraid to say, you know, I ran into a guy with three dogs, I said, put all three of those on the leash. Cause I said, my dog's a lot bigger nears, and my dog's not aggressive, but I, you know, so I'm glad she said something, and, you know, any of us when we walk out there. You know, I, I don't want Carl to be a cop, but any of us walk out there, we can say, hey, can you do us a favor and put the dog out there? Because you might run into a ninety-year-old man or woman, yeah, um and then I also wanted to thank Nancy and Amanda for bringing everything you brought to us tonight. And I do not want you to feel like, you know, we're down on anything or whatever.
Two out of three.
We, we do, I appreciate what you're doing, and I, it makes, it keeps Wyreka vital.
Yes.
So, thank you.
Yes, yes, is that it?
I'm done.
The big thing is, I've been over at Greenhorn several times since our new park goes, Carl's there, and I, I have seen improvements. Like since he's been there, so it's a step in the right direction, we just need to make it a little better still.
Right, I agree. That's it, okay, no uh fire safety council stuff?
No, that was before the last meeting.
Oh, okay, okay.
One's coming up next week.
Next week, okay, Deb?
I have a C two C meeting next Tuesday, and um I guess I can find another place to walk Bella.
What's the matter?
I don't.
She's not on Lake.
She's not reasonable.
Turn off the recording.
Twelve years old and is.
Set in her ways.
If a dog comes up to us, she goes in back of me.
Yeah.
So, but nothing else.
C two C is when?
Tuesday and, I mean, where is it? Give me a minute, Montague Rotary Room.
Oh, good, okay.
I read it too, I'm like, where's it?
Okay, cool.
I typed it, I should know.
Well, nothing to add, just, yeah.
Not it?
Nope.
No homelessness, no nothing?
No, you're gonna add on that one.
Well, I'm just gonna talk about the meeting today, but you have anything else?
Nope.
Okay. Okay, um, so I did, I did attend a homelessness coalition meeting today. Um, usually it's held in Wyreka at the, um, Behavioral Health Office, but that was busy, so this time it was in Weed, and I didn't find out about it until the very last minute, but they changed the location, so. Uh, anyway, it was an interesting meeting. I was, did I, I showed you my notes, didn't I? Yeah, here they are. Um, uh, as you all know, we're in a continuum of care, and the continuum of care covers seven counties, I believe, Steve?
That's right.
Steve was at the meeting too. Uh, and before, it's, it's run by Shasta County. Shasta County has the staff, and it's run by Deb. It's been a very Shasta County-centric program, where they get the majority of the funding. Um, yeah, according to a law that's recently come down, now they have to, before it was thirteen Shasta County members and six outside counties. So, they had the majority of the votes. Well, the state of California did away with that. They said that that's not legal. So, now we'll have one voting member for each county. So, we will have one, and Trish Barbieri, who is amazing, she works with social services, and she's been our representative, uh, our one representative on the board, uh, and as she said, you know, there were a lot of votes, uh, going south. So, uh, we elected her today to continue to represent us, uh, and I think that she'll do a very good job. She's done a good job so far, and she has, uh, managed to break away a little bit of funding for us, hasn't she? But most of the money. And, and, uh, to be honest, they have a much bigger homeless problem in Shasta County than we do. Much bigger. But, um, anyway, so she's gonna continue to do that, but at the next meeting, I'm hoping that we'll have a new chair right here, uh, because they did ask us, we're still going to have our advisory committee, our county advisory committee, and we've been meeting on that committee for how long, now, Dwayne? A year, two years?
Well, two years, yeah.
Eight years, ten years? Seems like forever. It's been at least two or three years, and, um, and, uh, uh, heretofore, there's not been a person called chairman. We've all been equal sitting there, and there's people from Shasta and Weed and Wyreka and, you know, and other cities, Dunsmere, other cities as well, um, and so, uh, we had a lot of discussion to there, today, and be, and because Dwayne couldn't be there, I tried to nominate you. I thought it was only fair if you were there. So, at the next meeting next month, then we'll be discussing it. I hope that you'll be accepting the chairmanship of that, because you've done a, you've done a great job. Great job with that, but, uh, uh, Ed Petches is gonna be talking to you about, um, you know, all the background stuff and the work that he's done.
Yeah, no, he's.
He's done a lot of work. He's, he's a great guy, so I was really pleased to see that. Um, so Ed is leaving. He's talking about moving to Idaho. It's a huge loss for us. Ed Petches of Weed.
Oh.
Remember, he's the one that worked with Dr. Marbet, and he's former law enforcement.
Why is he moving? Family?
Uh, I think there's a number of reasons.
Okay.
Yeah, number of reasons, not family.
Home issue?
No, he has a home, he has a home in Weed, but, uh, uh, I heard a rumor that, uh, that the city of Weed is going to allow a commercial plantation close to his house. That might have something to do with it. So, anyway, uh, so, uh, Tori told us that we have to set our expectations, so we're gonna be looking at that, what we will hope to accomplish with our homeless, uh, our homeless, Siski, homelessness coalition group throughout our area. Um, and, uh, also the COC advisory committee. But, um, Ed, I thought Ed asked a very good question. His question was, so the county of Siskiyou has to pay seventy-five hundred dollars for us to be a member of the continuum of care of the CFC. So, uh, Ed wanted to know, he asked Tori, who called in by phone from Redding, said, okay, so what do I tell them? What do they get out of it? Here's what they get out of it. Um, eighty percent of all the grant funding, good night, see you guys.
Good night.
Eighty percent of all the grant funding goes to the communities. Uh, if you are a member, there's twenty per, there's a twenty percent cap that you get over and beyond that eighty percent. And also, they allow us two more HMIS, H, HTMIS?
HMIS.
HMIS licenses at no cost, because the c- licenses cost a hundred dollars a line? Is it?
No, it's a different number than that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Four hundred dollars a line. So, if, if the county is a member, then we also get an additional two more licenses, plus we get free HMIS training instead of having to pay for it. They come up here and they teach the agencies, because technically, all of the resource centers should be in HMIS, because they enter into this system. The system is called human.
Homeless, homeless management information.
Homeless Management Information Center, and each system, and each agency needs to be able to input their homeless numbers in. And unless they have this license, that Jack paid four hundred and fifty dollars for, you can't enter it in. So, uh, we really need the county to continue that, and, and before, we have chipped in on that. I can't remember. Do you remember how much we chipped in?
Yeah, we all did.
Few hundred.
Well, it was, it was based off of pers- percentage.
Was that the twelve hundred and nine? I thought that was the study.
Yeah, that, that.
Yeah, I think it was twelve hundred. You're right. Yeah. So, uh, we may, we may be looking at that in the future. Depends on what happens at the Board of Supervisors meeting, so. You might talk to.
So, they have that, you know, like, the Beacon of Hope actually is, is in on that HMIS now. They, they've been actually running, doing counts on that. Uh, when they were doing the shelter.
Yeah, I did one. Steve has.
And they're actually doing the shelter. They actually were doing HMIS, so they were doing counts on that.
They were. Oh, and that's, that's one thing I didn't talk to you about. Okay, so, I know that you had talked about numbers before. They kind of refined them. Um, there are two hundred and forty-four homeless individuals, um, in Siskiyou County. Uh, that's up forty-five percent, but I found out that our numbers, the Wyreka numbers, are there are eighteen adults, eighteen male adults, four female, um, and there were nine visuals in our point-in-time count. Um, so the numbers are, you know, only at about thirty-one.
Yeah.
And, and they, but there are, but there are some, some more numbers, because Behavioral Health did phone calls for their clients, and there were forty-five clients that claimed to be in some form of homelessness, which could be couch surfing. It could be staying in a garage. It could be any form of homelessness. So, actually, our numbers were much higher than thirty-one. It was the thirty-one plus the forty-five. Um, so, uh, anyway, I, I thought that that was very interesting. This that I just handed out to you is something that Trish Barbieri came up with. It's a Health and Human Services, Social Services Division overview of housing benefits and housing programs, and it tells you what individuals and families can apply for, and, and how they qualify. It tells you on each line, case management, first month's rent, last month's rent, financial contribu- contributions by the family, movie expenses, on, ongoing, um, past due rent, and from what we've heard, that there really isn't anything that pays for past due rent. Um, however, they are working with the hospitals, because they've, the hospital has found out that they cannot release homeless people unless they have a safe, clean place for them to go to heal. So, that's why this is so important.
Yeah.
And it, and, but a hotel room does qualify because it's safe and it's clean.
What does?
A hotel room.
Okay.
So, they're talking about that. So, we did have a representative there. Jim Reynolds was there from Fairchild today. So, so that was really good. Um, that was, that was a really good meeting, I thought.
Before you move on, I do have a question. Someone asked me if Human Services was, um, going to make arrangements for a shelter that would, a day shelter that would supply showers and a meal, I think.
There's, there's not any plans that I'm aware of for that to happen this time.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
No, we, we didn't get that much. Somebody asked about funding. I think it was Don Murray. No, we, how much did we get? Four thousand? For funding for our area? Wasn't very much.
No, no.
Wasn't very much.
No.
Uh, wasn't enough to build a shelter, and, you know, I'm hoping it'll be enough for some, some other things.
Plus, there are some restrictions on the use of the funds, because the strategy is housing first as opposed to sheltering first.
Right, right.
And so, um.
Um, uh, okay, so the next item that I wanted to tell you about is that I had a meeting yesterday with folks from Splash, from Ringy Pool, and from the city of Montague. I had the mayor of the city of Montague, um, Tiffany Lorenzini, and her pool manager, Jennifer, can't remember her last name, uh, and Amy and Buzzy, um, Amy Evans and Buzzy McCluskey, and, uh, we had a really good productive meeting, and thank you for letting us use your office, Matt. I know you didn't know it, but we just took over. We took over. You weren't there, and we used it, because these guys were in here having an audit meeting, and Steve's office was a hundred and ten degrees. So, we couldn't, we couldn't get in there.
There was a lot more laughing at your meeting than I was.
Oh, yeah. Actually, it was a great meeting with a bunch of very positive people, and this is what we were, where we're working on, not funding for the pool. That's still very sober. That's still a pretty, I mean, you know, we're working on it, but this was about how do we help the kids get swim lessons or get over to Montague or Edna. So, we, we came up with some ideas, and so I just want you guys, it's not on the agenda or anything. I'm not asking for input. I just want you guys to be aware of what our discussion was.
And, and can I add? I would like to let you know that, uh, Montague is having a fundraiser for the swimming pool.
Well, they always do.
And they came into my store, and I made sure I donated to it.
Awesome.
And, you know, we wanna, we wanna encourage other merchants to do that, but then buy tickets even if you're not gonna go to, uh, you know.
I think it's May, May twenty something.
Yeah. I think it's, it's especially.
They told me.
Important to support.
This year, yeah. This year, yeah. To, to make sure we're giving them some help.
So, here's are the two options, the two things that we talked about, and you guys can tell me what you think, um, what your preference is, and then I'll tell you what they said their preference was. Okay, one idea was to pay for swimming lessons. Swimming lessons in Montague are Monday through Thursday for two weeks, half-hour lessons, fifty dollars. Pay for swim lessons for up to X number of student, of, uh, kids. Now, those kids start at, uh, three. I think there's three to, three to.
We're talking about three years old?
Three to five, and five to seven, and so, anyway, we're talking about doing that way, but that way, the mothers would have to bring this, the kids, and they would have to stay there with them. Um, so the other option, and that would be, we figured if we did about twenty kids, that would be about twelve hundred dollars, right? So, the other option that we were looking at, mothers, we, we had a low number last year, because mothers were not willing to put their children on a bus to go to Montague that also stopped at different places. You know what I mean? I don't think there is a stop between here and Montague. So, here's the idea that we came up with. Uh, Splash has a pool manager and some, uh, some swimming instructors, um, that are out of work right now, because there's no pool in Wyreka. So, the thought was, is that if we could hire one of those instructors who are, you know, they're old enough to have, have gotten their license, you know, to be around children and teach children, okay, that if we hire one of those for three days a week, not every single day, but three days a week, like Monday, Wednesday, Friday, or Tuesday, Thursday, Saturday, or, I don't think there is a Saturday bus. Anyway, if we hired them for two to three days a week, then we have a, a local meeting spot for the kids to go to. We talked about the three locations in Wyreka. One is in front of the Sheriff's Department, but that's gonna be too busy with all the construction for the jail. The other place is up in front of Grocery Outlet, but it's right on the highway. People go by too fast. And the third place, which is our preferred location, is at the Stage Office. So, we could have the students meet there at ten-thirty. At ten-forty-five, the bus leaves and it arrives in Montague at eleven o'clock. Okay, well, free swim doesn't open till twelve. The mayor of Montague said that she will have, she's got volunteers that will provide an art program outside, you know, some kind of recreation program, or there's the library that they would open for these kids at no cost. Um, so, uh, and, oh, and by the way, at the last local transportation commission, remember last year, we had to pay forty dollars a kid to have a bus pass for the whole summer? They lowered that to twenty.
Oh.
Just for this program, for kids. So, what we, if this twenty dollars would do, it would give a child a pass. I think it's for six weeks. Wasn't it like six or eight weeks last year, I think, Steve? Anyway, gives a pass for most of the summer, and kids can actually, they could go anywhere. They could go to the Dunsmere Pool, they could go to the Weed Pool, they could go, um, to Montague or to Edna. But we're, the one that we're planning right now for the organized children's events would be to pick up at Stage, go to Montague, and then the bus leaves from Montague at four fifteen.
And this is for the open swim, not the lessons?
Open. This is for the open. This is another option.
Gotcha.
So, uh, that, that leaves at four fifteen, which gives the kids plenty of time to be back here by five for parents to pick them up at the Stage Office. We figured that, um, three days a week, about six hours a day, um, times, um, we, we're not sure about how much the money would be, but we were gonna ask Matt if there was any, um, a seasonal worker that would, you know, for, to, to pay for this, a slot, um, would be about two hundred dollars a week, and that would be about twelve hundred dollars. So, this, they're pretty equal programs. I'd say with, with, uh, cost, we've gotta advertise it. There's some other things that go with it, but, uh, if we could say, you know, like, up to, to spend up to, oh, and then the cost of the, the bus passes. If we could say to spend up to like twenty-five hundred dollars, I don't think it would cost that much, 'cause we gotta print the passes too.
Okay, I have a question. We normally pay Splash, how much a year?
Yeah.
So, what's going with that fund?
Something like that.
Now, we've had two seasons that we haven't paid, gave it out in the month.
No, only one.
So.
We'll, we'll be two now.
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
So, are you asking, did we pay them?
I'm asking, are those funds available for this to come out?
They're not in the budget, I don't think, right?
They, they weren't, they were temporarily suspended for eighteen, nineteen, and nineteen, twenty.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Okay.
So, if we do this, we're going to have to look for the funding, and that's the reason we were looking at maybe the seasonal worker type thing, but I don't know. Rhonda would know better where the funding would come from. We can't make the decision tonight. It's not on the agenda. But I wanted you all to be aware of it, and I would like to work with staff to get it on the agenda, because the next meeting is May second, and then the end of May, first part of June, kids are out of school.
Yeah.
So, and, and we have to do the advertising.
Where's the transportation, the van coming from?
No van. Bus.
Right on the stage.
Stage.
It's a stage. Have you seen the Stage Bus? It's a cute little short bus. It's cute.
We're not gonna go there.
It is. All the new buses are shorter.
Good. Yeah, so PD last year, um, handled the passes, 'cause they knew the families.
That's right, Police Department.
And so, they, they, um, did a great job in knowing who could be in need of activities over the summer, so we used the teen fund, um, or teen activity, which was also, um, helps with Shop With The Cop, but, um, this year, Shop With The Cop, they're looking to get more community participation.
Right.
In that, and that's why we shifted the funds to their, um, association, and then they're going to help fundraise out the, um, credit union. Um, if somebody else wants to match, you know, a dollar or something there. So, it's off the city, and it's just kind of a communit- more community-based.
Honestly, I haven't talked to, to the Police Department about it. I did talk with Stage. Um, I talked to Melissa yesterday, but I haven't, because, um, it didn't work.
It didn't work with them? Okay.
Yeah, very, 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 very low attendance.
Okay.
So, this is something that, um, you would like us to bring back, um, probably at the next meeting, May second?
Yes.
So, we can, we can do that. I know there'll be some more discussions between now and then.
Well, I, yeah, and, and can I, can I ask a question? Hmm, I don't think you can tell me this. So, is, so if there were two options, should we just bring both options? One would be for the swim lessons alone, and one would be for the transportation.
Oh, I know what other question I was gonna ask. I'm so sorry. I have to say it before I forget again. So, these Stage Buses that are going to transport these children, they don't pick up any other passengers, do they?
Yes.
They still pick up the other passengers.
But I don't think so. I think when they leave the Stage Office, I think that bus goes straight to Montague.
But there can be other people riding it, though.
That's why we want the adult or the, you know, eighteen-year-old. The, the actual one, the person that they were thinking about asking if she'd be interested is nineteen and has, has worked at the pool for years.
So, we can, we can pretend it as, assuming that, that there's still two options at that point, 'cause, um, the Splash folks may, maybe say it earlier.
I asked the Splash folks to come tonight, but when it's on the agenda, they will.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll, we, we can do that.
Cool. Re- remember that we have, that we have those pool meetings, if you, you know, if you've signed up for all last week.
Oh, yes.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, those are.
Five, five, five days, four nights and a day.
And I can't attend the twenty, twenty-second, twenty-third, no, twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, because of the League of Cities legislative days.
I'm gonna be at all five, so.
Good. I'll be there for the rest, but I won't be there for those two, and I did let them know.
Yeah, I think if, if encouraging people to come to those meetings, I think will, will, is something that we definitely should do.
Yeah.
Because it does make a difference in the grant applications.
Public meetings, right.
And, and plus, there's, you know, like, crazy.
And one of them's gonna be at the park, the Ringy Park, the meeting on Saturday.
City doesn't pay anything.
Oh, it's going, sorry.
Saturday the twenty-seventh.
Yeah, so that'll be good.
Ten thirty.
And, and you should also know that the committee is, I mean, this is a go-get-'em committee. They are amazing. And they hit a thousand houses when they walked around town the last two weekends.
Yeah, they, they've hit hard, because I've given a field and said, nope, already got one. And they hit my house, but no, they said, we've already talked to them. Thank you.
Yeah, yeah. So, uh, they have gotten a lot of interest from the community, and they said most of the people that they talked to were very positive, you know, so, that was cool. And then the only other thing was, uh, uh, the Siskiyou Revitalization Network that I told you guys about that I've been involved in for years. So, we had our exchange with Weed. So, we had a committee. It was Lisa Nixon, myself, um, and Shelley Davis went down to Weed on Saturday, and we got a tour of the town, and then we ended up going to a COS play that evening, which was a Greek tragedy done by eighteen, nineteen-year-olds. It was, it was, it was interesting. It was, it was good. It was good. But anyway, so, yeah, we went to, we went to some places, and one of the places we went to was La Florista.
Oh, it was good.
It's the new cannabis store.
Yeah.
Oh.
It was a good setup.
I was saying.
Was it good? Yeah, yeah, Dwayne, let's go.
I don't know. I didn't partake. But anyway, it was, it was interesting.
Trying to set you up.
Because Weed is really promoting, like Oregon is. They're, I mean, which makes sense, I guess. The town of Weed is promoting Weed.
Yeah.
Anyway, uh, it was interesting, because the, the mayor went with us, and, and I don't know if you guys remember the young man who sat in the back during the cannabis discussions.
Yes.
It was talking about all the different chemical foods. Remember the real smart guy?
The chemist.
Yeah, the chemist. Yeah, that's right. You did say it was chemist. Anyway, he was the second tour guide.
Oh, really?
Yes. Very nice young man. Very nice. Anyway, we had a great tour. So, this Saturday, I don't know how many of you will be out and about on Saturday, but Fort Jones, the city of Fort Jones, not the whole city, but is coming over, and we're going to take them for a tour of our town, and we have, we have stops that we're taking. And one thing that's going on this Saturday, you know, Mike, uh, gee, Mike.
Yeah, I love him. Griffintini.
Griffintini. Mike Griffintini has organized. Griffintini, Mike Griffintini has organized a tour on a hay wagon.
Okay.
And it's gonna be this Saturday, and so we got seats on that, we got eight seats on that, so.
Perfect.
Anyway, we'll take, we'll take people around, so, and that's gonna be at the corner of Third and North at eleven o'clock. So if you guys wanna, wanna go, you gotta come, you gotta pay five bucks for their insurance. We paid for eight seats, so I think we're okay.
We don't have any weed to show.
That's what I told him, I told the.
Obviously, we got grass hay, some grass ore.
I told, I told Ken Calviene, the mayor of Weed, he could, he could be the king of Weed. It was five of them, because we're not gonna do. Um, and, and the last stop will be at the Empire Room, the Music Hall.
All right.
And, uh, I just picked this up the other day, I am impressed, they have got something going on almost every week. And so this, uh, Saturday, April twentieth, they've got Honey Glove, which is a local band. Uh, CD release party, they're gonna have, you know, like hors d'oeuvres, they're gonna have a band there, so that'll be our last stop. We'll go there, so it should, should be really nice, anyway. And then the, the actual, where every, everybody comes together, they call the gathering, that's paid for by the Ford Family Foundation, is going to be at Bel Campo on May twenty-fifth, actually, no, 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 May fifteenth. It's May fifteenth, which is a Thursday night, I believe, no, it's a Wednesday, that's interesting, and it's gonna be out at Bel Campo. So if any of you are interested, we, we are able to invite a few people from each of our communities.
They're gonna have some of their chefs, can they put on chef's camp style?
Yeah.
If you've ever been out there.
This is not a Bel Campo event.
Cause Bel Campo.
This is a Siskiyou Revitalization Committee event.
Who's, who's cooking for you though?
We don't know, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
Actually, I found out that Ellie's, I don't know how many of you know Robert West, that used to work at the Siskiyou Daily News. He and his wife bought Ellie's, which is a cute little coffee shop, um, in Weed, and he's also doing catering, so he talked to me and said, we'd be happy to do it for you, so maybe, we'll see.
What's going on at the League next week?
Do an advertisement, aren't we?
What? What's going on at the League next week that you're going to?
Oh, it's, uh, everybody's invited and I did forward it to you guys, there's two things going on in May, well, no, one in April, one in May. One is the legislative days, they have it once a year, where you go down and they have, you know, they have legislators there to speak. Jim Bell is one of the, the senator, Jim Bell is one of the speakers that has some legislation. You're talking to the legislators and then you're going across the street to our own legislators to talk to them. And, uh, then there's the League Board meeting. And at the League Board meeting, we're going to be discussing our rural cities working group. Because we're trying to get the League to give us our, their blessing to have a rural working group. They have not blessed us yet.
Ooh.
And there's some pushback from staff.
Really?
So Steve is working on that with me and it's, um, it's a challenge. So there'll be a presentation at the board meeting and so I'm part of that.
Not, okay, gotcha, I'm still planning on going to the one in June, the end of June.
My understanding for the legislative one too, I think it's the Latin American caucus, and they put on like a huge party and everybody needs to come. They go, we put on the best party, you know, okay.
It is, it's the Latino party. And then the other thing is May twenty, which date is Paradise? May twenty-four, I guess? May tenth, May tenth. Okay, so this, this Sacramento Valley, Northern California Division is having our next in-person meeting, we only have in-person meetings quarterly and the rest are all on the phone.
Right.
And that's going to be on Friday, May tenth, in Paradise, at the park.
Oh.
And I did forward it out to all of you, I re-forwarded it out, so it showed you the lunch, it's gonna be a bag lunch, so you just have to pick, pick what you want, lunch is sixteen bucks and you have to send a check and say you're coming. Um, and it's going to start at eleven, I think, and then it should be over by, you know, four or five, but it's mainly there's gonna be a bus tour through town, so you'll get to see.
Oh.
The vern, what's left, what the new building is. It's May tenth.
Wow.
On a Friday.
That'd be interesting to see.
They have to let them know, so take a look, if you haven't got it, I, I can resend it.
I'll look at my calendar first.
One of their council members told Steve and I that four of the five council members were living in Chico, they were hav- they were having to get special dispensation from the governor to live outside of town.
Yep, yep, that's exactly right.
Four of the five, yeah.
Including the mayor, including the mayor. And you know, the city of Chico has been so good to them, because they let them use their old city hall, um, you know, for their meetings, at town meetings and, um, in fact, they call it, they call themselves the Town of Paradise. So they have town, town meetings.
I know that.
Anyway, they, they're doing an amazing job and there's, from what we hear, and there's a lot going on and Melissa Schuster is a representative on our, on our board and she's really anxious, excited to show everybody what's going on, so, uh, yeah.
That's gonna be an interesting day.
It is.
Yeah.
Steve's been, didn't you go down for a city managers meeting down there?
I've been on a tour of, of Paradise the, the day before they opened it back up.
Oh, wow. Pretty devastating, huh?
Devastating, and, and actually, at that time, there was immense amount of activity. Uh, there was a, I think it was, I think it was eight hundred or a thousand person PG&E encampment.
Oh.
Down the road.
Wow, I think they've got all the power back on now.
Yeah, I think the power's back on, they're probably, I, I'm sure it looks very different than it did that day, cause we were, they had, the day we were up, we had security, in fact, they almost didn't let our bus through, which I thought was pretty funny.
Anyways.
I did have one thing, I know I made light of not having a report, I forgot to tell you on behalf of the Planning Department. We've received plans for the credit union. It's an approved, so it's an administrative program, I've worked with Matt and Fred, we're looking over the, uh, permit, permit now.
Good.
I don't know, Paul might be able to tell us best case scenario when it would go up, but.
Our, our hope, our hope is to break ground in August and be in, I think, the following May or June, yeah.
Awesome.
It's a, it's a quick, uh.
It's out there by the police department.
Yes.
Yeah, we bought the property next door to.
We, are you on their board?
Yes.
Oh, you are, out on the, uh, you're the board chair of the credit union? Oh, I didn't know that, that's great.
And we're excited, because our, our employees are tripping all over each other.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, that's true, I see, I see that.
We, we don't see any issue with selling the property here, we own DuRashay's office and our building and we don't see, we've already talked to Realtors and we, we're being careful to not put it on the market yet, because we don't wanna have to lease it back.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
We have a firm out of Phoenix that just builds credit unions, that's all they do.
Okay.
And it will look a lot like, um, I don't know if you've seen the Citibank commercial where the guy is walking through in New York and it's, it's going to be new, it will not be, it will not be banking with a teller line, it'll be totally different.
Oh, awesome, I like that one on TV where it looks like a lounge.
Cold drinks and you'll come in and there'll be little offices that you can work with people or, if you're just doing it, like if you're, like these under thirty people. They just come in and they wa- they, they wanna just walk up to a little stand and put their check in and go. And it'll, and it'll, and we're hoping to have, we're looking at to drive through, not drive through windows, but drive up tellers, see, in two lanes, you could even drive up, you know.
Poverty's big enough.
Yeah, it is.
I got something to add, I forgot, I should've said earlier.
Okay.
Next Saturday is the Home and Garden Show that I'm putting on for the Siski Builders Exchange Home and Garden Show.
The twentieth through the twenty, twenty-seventh?
Yes.
Okay, cool.
And.
Are you barring the stage?
It is actually down at the Miners Convention Center again this year.
That's where it was last year.